Hmm. Eleven meetings.
Lovely weather outside, we've been having.
Yes, quite lovely weather.
I'm dressed like a clown.
Outfit is great.
Thank you.
Is playing Sudoku.
Nice.
Oh my, nice game you got going there.
And I do my puzzles on the weekends in the paper.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, usually people don't speak during them.
Okay.
Well, I can start with something. Cantor, I have a question for you.
Yeah, what's up?
In your SOPs for EMS and doctors, do you not have anything about professionalism in there? Like, you have to be professional while working?
So EMS are separate to us, uh, to be clear, but uh, for our doctor SOPs, uh, yes, I believe it's mentioned twice and there's a whole section.
There's a whole section about being professional?
Uh, yes, hold on, let me pull it up. Uh, we have a section called professionalism and consequences.
Okay.
Uh, professionalism is also the second point under job responsibilities.
Okay, can you read that to me by any chance?
Sure. Under job responsibilities, uh, the second bullet point is treat our patients fairly and their injuries effectively while remaining professional.
That's it? That does the only thing?
Then, then professionalism consequences says, while on duty and off duty, you will be representing the LSNG and your fellow coworkers. You must hold yourself to a degree of professionalism and accountability while on and off duty. You'll be subject to consequences determined by attendings and or the board or directors if their request is not upheld. The LSNG is a right to work institution and as an employee, the board of directors reserves the right to terminate your employment at any time for any reason. Some actions may result in immediate termination. And it goes into that.
Alright.
Yo, who, who transgressed, Mike?
Who transgressed? Uh, you do have a doctor that is currently going around egging somebody on. Because they don't see eye to eye, especially when they're in a work environment, they still seem to be doing this. They also do dress up and go around claiming that they have leukemia. Uh, as apparently as an act.
Annie's.
Uh, I, I do believe he actually just found out he was sick, um, while he was being treated. I'm assuming Rod Long spoke to you. I promise you that, uh, the big picture of this is far more confusing. I've spoken to every party and every side.
Doesn't, doesn't.
Uh, and it has been ongoing for a long time.
He's getting bullied, bro.
What, Rod?
Yeah, why you guys bullying him, bro?
I, I don't, I, I'll be honest, I haven't seen any of that. Montez, uh, as far as I'm aware, has never once reached out to him.
Well, it's not just that. I've also been told that he refused medical, which I feel like is a bit of an issue too.
Uh, any doctor is authorized to not treat someone if they're uncomfortable with the situation in any way. They can't deny them treatment entirely. They have to, you know, make sure another doctor is available or Dr. Kate can assist them. Um, but straight from the desk of Derek Shaw, uh, if you're in any reason uncomfortable, you do not have to treat a patient yourself.
Okay, so you think it's fine that there's in a work environment that he's egging somebody on and.
We are dealing with internally, um, but I'm sure what hasn't passed on is the first day that this happened, um, I spoke to both of them there in person while they were there together. Uh, made Montez apologize for it, explained in front of Rod to Montez why he should not have done that. Uh, and the situation ended fine. The next time I was able to speak to Rod was after he had already come in and stabbed Montez and been trespassed. Which I had none of, nothing to do with any of that part. Uh, and what he did was come to the hospital for treatment. I asked, hey, do you need treatment? He said yes, so we didn't bother him at all. We got someone to treat him. Then he stands there flipping us off, uh, and yelling at me for not listening to him. Even though I had and had forced Montez to apologize, uh, and he came and stabbed him anyway.
And what about the recent incident?
Uh, with the, uh, with the wrench. So I believe Rod was in the hospital, um, upset again, uh, about Montez's behavior. Uh, about the dressing up. I had heard about that, um, that, uh, I had talked to Montez about. He had a pretty different opinion about it, but I still talked to Rod and we had what I thought was a good conversation. Right in the middle of that conversation, uh, Joanna runs up and says that she heard something about Rod. I forget exactly what she said. Uh, it was something. Something rude. I don't remember, um. She didn't, she didn't even say where she heard it from. I'm assuming the assumption's Montez, but I haven't even heard that still. Uh, so Rod just cuts off our conversation, goes this motherfucker and runs into the ER and bludgeons him with a wrench. Um, right in the middle of a bunch of doctors and patients. So I go in and hold him up with my gun until the car's gonna arrive. He was beating my doctor on the floor, so I could have fucking shot his ass, but I did not. Out of, uh, an attempt to not escalate it like he continues to do, uh, I decided to just hold him up instead.
No, no, I'm not defending Rod's action here. And I'm not saying that Rod is doing the right thing. But if you have a doctor in a professional environment that keeps egging somebody on, you know, somebody's about to snap at some point.
I understand that. The issue is, um, as far as I'm aware, uh, and I have tried to, uh, talk to Rod about this as well. There was no egging on to get to the stabbing. That was very much, uh, Montez apologized. Montez owned up to what he did. Rod was not happy that it happened at all still and just stabbed him anyway. Um, there might, this might have escalated past that point.
Professionalism is very serious.
Now pissed about being stabbed, um, but as far as I have been able to tell, and both sides have been able to tell me. Rod over escalated this by himself.
What, what are these two individuals' names?
Rod Long and a doctor, Montez Belair.
Montez Belair, Rod Long.
Hmm, correct.
Okay, uh, you have their numbers?
Uh.
I have Montez.
Yeah, I can send you Rod's number.
Are they around right now?
Uh, I don't believe Montez is.
Can we get Montez around?
Yes, almost certainly.
Can we get Rod around?
Let me, let me see if Rod is around.
Yeah, let's get him over here, cuz.
Okay.
It sounds like high school, so I'll be the principal.
No, it, it is high school. We already.
It really is.
No, 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 no.
We don't need you to be the principal. We need this Montez guy to get in trouble for fucking antagonizing this dude.
It sounds like, it sounds like if, if it's escalating to the point where people are holding each other up and punching each other and all that. Why don't they just do mutual combat and be done with it?
Hell yeah, I think that works for me.
I'm not, I don't mean principals and like talk to them. I mean, principals and tell them either. You do mutual combat, get it out of your system like adults, or you know, we just start pushing ego act on the two of you. Like, it is dumb.
Ego act that motherfucker Rod.
It's dumb at this point.
It is, absolutely.
We told, we told Rod to go through the proper channels with this as well. And the reason I'm bringing up is because somebody said that you guys don't have SOPs in terms of professionalism.
I don't know who you're talking to that's that misinformed, but we absolutely do and we always have. In fact, there, there's another place where it's mentioned, um, if I remember correctly. Cuz, uh, that, that was a key point that we wanted to bring up. Oh, there's a whole other section about, um. About being targeted in the halls where we can send you off duty if you're causing unnecessary risk for other doctors as well, um. So it's, we cover all this.
No, it's, it's fine. I'm just like, if it, if that is the case and there is SOPs for it, then he should be held accountable for being unprofessional. What Rod did is not correct. And, and Rod is being chewed the fuck out for being a fucking idiot. Rod is not in the right. But I will say in Rod's case, he doesn't usually go to the extremes, especially not with civilians. And I can vouch for that.
Yo, what was that guy's punishment? Montez.
It's been hard to punish someone where every single time, uh, we find out any proof, uh, about something has happened, which has been a single time. He immediately got bludgeoned with a wrench. Uh, so he has not been on duty since then. The initial time I made him apologize, I had him go to Rod, uh, that first night. Uh, and own up to what he had done and apologize for it. Initially, uh, he, he discussed it and he understood and we had, uh. All three of us had a discussion in the ER while, uh, while the party that this situation surrounded was being, uh, being consulted by Pixie.
Hmm. Okay.
Cause that, I mean, that's all it was. It was a one situation thing at first.
Alright, well, how about we just tell them to either do mutual combat or, you know, get over it?
Yeah.
Well, mutual, mutual combat or Rod can actually just fucking, uh, what was it again? Restraining orders so they don't fucking talk to each other and just leave it.
Yeah, something.
I don't think people realize Montez isn't trying to talk to him. I found no proof. I even asked Rod, uh, has he ever contacted you?
No, but that's the thing though, he does, he does it through other people. The person that ran up to him in your case was somebody that apparently was talking to the guy and then ran up to Rod. He's doing it through other people by, and not egging him on directly. It's still unprofessional, but. Again, I'll have Rod do to go through the proper channels since they're not awake. And I got confirmed, confirmed that you do have SOPs, so.
Yes, we do.
I'm, I'm, I'm past the point of professionalism. How about they're both, you know, older than their teens, so.
Yeah, see, that's, that's kind of like, I don't think I have to handhold them as much as I've been trying to do.
But how they both act, they're not past their teens though.
Yeah, fire them both, dog.
Well, Rod isn't hired. Uh, however, we were going to remove his trespass, uh, until he did this again, so. I genuinely thought things were on better terms. Uh, it is unfortunate that he, uh, instead felt the need to pledge him Montez.
Not my circus, not my monkeys, not yours either. They're adults, figured out.
Yeah, Montez is cool cuz he gave me the Martin Luther King pass.
Hell yeah.
Does that mean you can say I have a dream?
Uh, yeah.
Nice.
That's pretty good. There you go.
That's a dub.
Uh, EMS question, are they dropping like flies?
I'd take dub. I would take dub. I can't.
Because we keep getting mixed fucking signals about him.
Yeah, every, so I've had random people come up to me and they're like, adoi EMS be quitting, but like every EMS I talked to is like. Nah, man.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing for me as well. Um, when you mentioned that last time, I went and talked to, uh, not only their High Command, a couple.
He's so tiny, he's got the center bar.
I have not heard any of it. I don't, I don't know where it's coming from.
I got an important question though. Are they, are they hiring for EMS? Is there like an actual issue for that right now?
I, um, I'm actually not a hundred percent sure. Let me see. I know Charlotte Spade was their, um, P and T lead, but she was trying to get hired as a member of PD. Yes, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So that might have slowed things down, I'll say, but, uh, that wasn't like, you know, boo hoo, I quit EMS. She just wanted to move on. Uh, it does look like an EMS trainee was hired pretty recently.
Well, uh, I raised EMS pay to thirteen hundred before tax.
Holy shit, okay.
It is a very lucrative thing, uh, if you want. Uh, I know you don't handle hiring.
Yeah.
For you, but I'll talk to Abby. I'll talk to Abby.
Yeah, go for it. I'll, I'll make sure they're aware as well when I see, uh, him and Dion, but yeah, that's perfect.
He's so tiny.
Hopefully that helps them with it a bit cuz I, I think it has been an issue, but, um, it's more so, uh, medical is, uh. An unrewarding field sometimes, uh-huh, so I think, uh, as much as I love it, uh, some people just get a little burnt out, so.
Yeah. True, dog.
Yeah, thank you. That makes a lot.
Well, compassion fatigue is a real thing for doctors, right?
Oh, yeah.
One hundred percent.
We have to be super morbid and fucked up with our, uh, jokes and everything cuz the only way we get through it. We deal with too much.
Hit level eighty-four attack in RuneScape last night.
Oh, good shit.
Yep.
So you're almost halfway there.
Yep. Um, okay, well, meeting started. Uh, let's can, let's go down the freaking, uh, table, okay? Uh, first, I'm, I'm finna hit the boys with the classic. PD liaison Dakota, do you have anything to present?
Uh, speak up Dakota.
I can't hear my.
Yeah, I just can't hear you.
You're all right, Dakota?
Oh, okay.
We can't hear you, Dakota.
Can you hear me now? Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Much better, much better than you are.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, I have a couple of things that I would like to bring up. Uh, this is probably something, I don't know at what level this could be addressed. I did talk to the deputy mayor before the, before this, about this. Apparently people are, uh, stealing a lot of helicopters now from the airport.
Uh-oh.
Yep.
Uh, we have no means to, uh, go after them.
Hmm.
For obvious reasons. And, uh, the only way we can get on ATC is if we drive down to the airport and, uh, link into theirs and tell them to land, which. Knowing that we can't follow, they don't.
Yo, quick, quick suggesterino, why don't you guys go steal a helicopter and then chase them?
Or why don't you just shoot them after you warn them to land?
Yeah, that seems fair. Can't you do that if you can't pursue?
We have shot at it. Uh, secondary issue, uh, our, our guns are not as effective as you would imagine. So, uh, we are struggling to, uh, take down a helicopter, even if we are hitting tail rotors.
You got pea shooters like with Glock's.
It's also.
What, what it is, is probably, it's probably a range issue, right?
Well, but if they're at a range of firearms, then doesn't that mean there's somebody else's problem?
What?
Well, well, by, the secondary thing I was gonna raise to that is, uh, we've also had a lot of instances where I put twelve rounds into somebody and then they hit me over the head with a wrench and knock me out.
Oh my god.
Whoa.
Yeah, I, I've hit people in the head before.
If I could blast that bitch.
I, I do try to be blasting and I still get a wrench in the forehead.
Yeah, this doesn't sound like council stuff.
Uh, no, I, I, I will say, um. Totally just comment your helicopter and park it at PD and wait for someone to do this shit.
Comment dare one brand PD, alright?
Yeah, fuck it. Yeah, you, look, just make sure it doesn't get blown up, so you don't have to pay the owner, you know?
Alright, uh, secondary.
And this is not for your use other than combating helicopters.
Yeah, I understood, understood. Uh, secondary thing is another thing that I spoke to deputy mayor about. The maze bank on Bay City is starting to get robbed.
Huh.
Shock.
Oh no.
Uh.
That's where I get my paychecks. What the fuck?
I know.
I should pick a different bank.
Do we have FDIC insurance?
Fucking better, Jesus.
I sure hope so, guys.
How am I money?
Are we losing money?
I sure hope we are, guys.
I sure hope we have it.
Oh no.
Oh boy.
That would be unmanageable forever.
Oh god, it would be. Oh no.
Um, but what I was saying to the deputy mayor is that, uh, people are using dinghies to get away in the canals cuz the access, uh, appears to be somewhere in the sewers. And, uh, our boats are having a little trouble catching up, but I know I spoke to him about that, but I'm more just bringing it to your attention that that's starting to happen, is the, uh, the bank up there is being robbed.
You know, I'm a, I'm a big fan of, uh, shoot their boat.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah. It's another, you can't follow them. Hey, you got guns.
Uh, look, I, 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 look, I'm not cop, I'm gonna tell you to do your job, um. But if you can't chase them, shoot them.
I mean, that used to be a thing back in the day.
Yeah, yeah, we, well, we used to shoot over a lot of different things back in the day, but that has changed to some extent.
Yeah, Dakota, I think, uh, maybe things like this you should bring to your High Command and then they can bring them to the state directly. I don't really know if the council's in a position to handle, you know, the technical specifications of your boats and guns and stuff.
Understood. I just wanted to bring it up cuz the mayor was here, but noted going forward.
Yeah, no, I support, uh, I support a bit of an escalation right now.
We will treat them if, if needed after the fact, so there you go, just go for it.
When I heard about the helicopter escape, it was, uh, yeah, definitely.
Yo, I had to speak up.
Oh.
Sorry, I was like, yeah, when I, I heard about the helicopter escape, I was like, I figured it was gonna be brought up at some point.
Oh, word? Yeah, there was a fucking helicopter that landed in Legion Square the other day.
Yeah, that's insane.
Lovely, not dangerous at all.
Alright, uh, and then the last thing was a DOJ question that I brought up to Chief Justice. So those, I just wanted to make you aware of some of those things. I didn't know.
Holy fuck, Malton's here.
Oh my god.
I was here last week too.
Oh, I just didn't even, holy fuck.
Are you good, Mike?
I'm sorry, I just, like, it just clicked with me, Dakota.
It's hilarious.
You're alright. Uh, no, my last point was already brought up before and, uh, that was it. I just wanted to bring some of those things to your attention, but other than that, I've gotten everything else sorted in the, uh. Other avenues that be, so I'm good.
There we go.
Alright, well, as for, uh, my stuff, the, uh, the only thing kind of on, on the radar is, uh, there, there's been some lawyers who have been, uh, grumbling about pay again. I believe that's just in relation to the income tax being adjusted recently though.
Uh, it hasn't been adjusted in like weeks.
May, maybe it's, it's just finally like filtering through and they're just finally noticing it. What, what is the, uh, the income tax act currently? Is there like a?
Eight or some shit?
I'll send you that.
I can go check real quick.
No, it's not bad at all, yeah.
It's, it's, it's always just, uh, just the standard of like pay drumming. I've basically kind of been, uh. Placating, uh, a, a little bit, just saying like, hey, the, the, the pay is the pay for now, you know, maybe that'll change next administration.
I'm not opposed to upping their pay. I could, I, I can do that shit right now, dog. I'm gonna be honest. Cuz I know that, uh, and my wife and I have, have observed that the, they, uh, they're having trouble right now.
Yeah, the lawyers are, yeah.
But see, the thing, the thing is, right, the thing that I've observed is EMS pay has been thirteen hundred for almost two weeks.
Um, it, yeah, it hasn't changed much.
Yeah.
Yeah, same with the doctor side, uh, which again, I appreciate a lot for that pay raise, but unfortunately, uh, I mean, the people who are there. Uh, it means a hell of a lot to them, which is the same thing I always thought, but it certainly hasn't caused people to work more.
You know, fuck it, I'll, I'll raise their pay to one thousand an hour. Fuck it, I think they deserve it.
I, I, I think that that is appreciated. The, the only thing I, I will say, and this is, uh, may, maybe this is an issue that might be present in other professions, but if I'm. I'm being perfectly honest, a, a lot of the lawyer pay issue is for, uh, self-inflicted wounds. Uh, people just aren't charging for their services.
True.
Yeah, exactly.
We can't, so this is all that.
Lance, there's, there's also an issue right now that I was told by the lawyers is that Oliver is undercutting everybody on contracts, saying that he will, it's fifty dollars for contracts.
What's up with that?
I heard that from Lateshun, yeah, people are undercutting hard, so it just wasn't worth doing.
Is charging fifty bucks, so now everybody else who is charging more is just getting nothing.
I mean, it's a classic race for the bottom. I, I don't think setting a, a mandatory minimum i- is appropriate, uh.
We had that for expungements for a reason, right? Giving that money to lawyers because otherwise, right, right, it was just a way to give them that money.
Expungement is a, is a state.
In the past, right? I'm saying, but in the past, right, we had the, the lawyers got twenty-five hundred dollars for expungements. That fee was for them. To ensure that they had that money and it was a minimum fee to file, right? I'm saying that we had a standardized like minimum before.
I, I don't think mandatory minimum is appropriate specifically for contracts because, uh, the, it, that goes into the bucket of how we enforce it. Expungements, they have to go through judges, they're very limited, they're very trusted, that, that is like an official government facet, uh, function. Whereas realistically speaking, if we mandate minimums for legal services, uh, you know, e- everyone knows a lawyer, you know, everyone's gonna under-report. Um, it's like, if, in a vacuum, like, sure, I, I'd like to set a mandatory minimum for contracts in, in this case, but, uh, in practicality sense, like, how, how do you enforce that? Or, or make sure that that thing's up to date? And I, I just don't think you can. If, uh, people are racing to the bottom, if Oliver is charging fifty bucks for a contract, I mean, shit, man, Oliver's not around twenty-four seven.
What I've heard is that people are saying that they'll wait to, to, to suspend this, which I suppose is their prerogative, um.
Yeah, that's also their, their prerogative, right? I, I, I don't know, it's.
I understand what you're saying, but I think regulation by enforcement is still a mechanism.
It is a mechanism. I, I don't know if it's just specifically that, although I mean, like Crane, you're, you're, you're in the legal world a, a, a little bit. Like, what, what are your thoughts on, on mandatory minimums for legal services?
Uh. Depends on the service, I guess, and I don't know why I would need to regulate, you know, free market.
That's a little where I'm at, right? Like, if, if the, the pay is being bumped, that, that might help a little. I don't know how, uh.
I, I agree.
Yeah, I, I don't know how popular the, the contract business is, let's say, but, uh, contract is, is just one facet of being a lawyer. Uh, it doesn't change the issue of lawyers historically like to race for the bottom. And I, I don't, I, I, I don't know how to solve that on institutional level, I'm gonna be honest.
So. You say you don't know how to solve it, but I feel like the solution's right there, right? And I know you guys are, you're saying that it doesn't work. Why doesn't the mandatory minimum work?
Because people just won't follow it.
Well, why don't we make it illegal for people to not follow it?
Oh.
Hmm.
Because then you have to investigate and charge for it and, and all that other stuff.
That would screw over lawyers, I suppose, and we already don't have many, so I'll, I'll give the benefit of the doubt in there.
The number of lawyers is, is not an issue. It's a, the, the lawyer pool is similar to PD in the sense that there, there, there's always gonna be people who wanna be lawyers. It, it just comes down to the quality you want and, and the function you want them to serve in the city, um.
They, they said that adoption fraud was unenforceable. I even said so. However, the number of people who got arrested for that shit threw the roof.
That's a good point, and it was hilarious.
So, yeah, I'm thinking like, you could, like, cops could set up sting operations on these fucking lawyers to see if they're crooked, you know what I'm saying? Like, there's a lot of potential there. Well, like, you know, people fucking, like, does confidentially, confidentiality apply to? Uh, the person who is hiring a lawyer, question mark?
It, it would not apply during a sting operation, but if, if you are discussing something with a lawyer, that is like.
Privileged.
By definition, privileged, which is similar to the can of.
You can snitch on your lawyer, yes.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm asking. Yeah, you know, people could just like, I feel like there's a lot of potential here, potentially, potential. You know what I'm saying? Fucking, uh, we, we can't just give up if, if, if the prospect of more work is like wagging in our face. I, I, like, like, for example, we got, we got something we're gonna present now, uh, or not now, but like at this meeting, uh, for. The, the motherfucking grime workers that are dropping their trailers off on the shoulder of Polito and other places, so they can speed back.
Yeah, that's insane. Thank you. I could not believe that.
It is so bad.
Think about this reaction though, okay? And then consider for a moment, how would the police ever catch someone doing this?
I think I have a note on that.
They have to stake out, yeah.
Right, so how would a person ever catch a lawyer undercutting, uh, and not following the mandatory minimum?
Sting operation.
Uh, it's just, it's a matter of effort.
It's, it's also, I, I, at a, at a baseline, I, I also don't really think it, it's our place to regulate mandatory minimums for legal services. Now, i- if that's a route that we're wanting to go for various industries, let's say, then I, I, I could support that in general. But I, I don't think it's our job as the council to say, uh, hey, uh, legal community, uh, quit undercutting each other. Uh, we're gonna come in like your parents and, and set mandatory minimums. I- is it, is it a big enough issue to where we have to come in and legislate it? That, that, that's where I'm at.
I, I will, I, I will concede that I don't think it is a big enough issue right now.
Okay.
Uh, and that's cuz I barely see Oliver around. I don't. Uh, I might, it might be different for my wife cuz she's awake during the day a lot more often than I am.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll certainly, uh, let, let's say kick around the, the prospect of mandatory minimums. I believe at, at one point I, I did in the past. But, um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm just not sure if it's like a legislative route, but I'll.
Has anybody spoken to Oliver and said, hey, maybe don't do this?
He fucking lied about it.
Yeah.
This motherfucker. I'm gonna go raise, I'm gonna go raise. This motherfucker. I'm gonna go raise, I'm gonna go raise lawyer pay real quick.
Okay.
Uh, Lance, I would talk to Grayson Roman about this when you get a chance.
Was he the one who flagged it up?
Um, they're two of the ones who did bring it to my attention. I'm trying to remember. There was several.
I I know Ledsen mentioned something.
Ledsen did as well. Yeah, Ledsen.
On his exit interview, but Ledsen should like never see Oliver in my, well, maybe he does sometimes.
No, they did. Yeah. There's like end of Ledsen shift, he would run into Oliver. I just want to say, I don't want to, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do mandated minimums for everything, for all services, right? Because I would hate to tell someone they can't do pro bono if they want to.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I I'm, I I'm, trust, I'm, I'm, I was, I'm very much aware of that. I'm not saying it should be on everything, but maybe some things, right? And if you can't afford it, maybe you shouldn't be participating in that for certain things, right?
I I don't think it's that people can't afford it. I, uh, I I just think it's people who either want want a good deal or who are getting paid. Uh, let's say in other ways, right? Like, maybe maybe you're you're not charging for the contract, but you're, uh, you know, you're getting a backend deal where you're like that. That business is lawyer, they're gonna keep coming to you for legal services related to that business, right?
And that just kind of seems retainer-y, doesn't it?
Right, which is, you know, once again, like another not issue, but, uh, you know, if if I'm, if I'm not paying for this contract, but I'm paying you, uh, five K a month as like a general retainer, like, is that something that that's covered under this mandatory minimum legislation? Like, I'll, I'll, I'll kick around feelers. I'll, I'll see what people are are thinking in general. I just, uh.
I'm just gonna say, when they sign off on a contract, they're essentially notarizing the contract, right? Having a standardized minimum notarization fee is not too crazy.
But, um, o- other than like general pay issues, yeah, there's, uh, there, there's nothing else really. Uh, civilian oversight board has received a couple complaints. We're still kind of working through like the, uh, the kinks of like the, uh, the pipeline to, uh, to be actioning those and such, but, uh, we'll have some test cases basically to look at, uh, next week.
Malton.
Yeah, what's up?
How do you feel about Archie Archer willing to completely abandon his role, uh, to run for mayor?
Damn.
Archie Archer never wanted to be on the civilian oversight board.
Did he not?
No, he wanted power, bro.
He just wanted power. He just wants.
He's gone. Yeah, no, that makes sense. Yeah.
He he admitted to me that this was, he he saw it as a political stepping stone. Um, I I mean, I, it is a little disheartening, but I I'm not, uh, I I'm not really ju- judging motives, shall shall we say, right?
Lost.
Uh, suggestion, I mean, it's your, it's your baby, so, uh, replace him with the fourth place.
I I was just about to say that, yeah. I mean, if he's already looking past it, then why don't we give it to somebody who actually wanted to be on it?
That's why they were supposed to interview them.
Honestly, fair.
Well, that's our suggestion, obviously, you know.
And and as he, I'll, 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 uh, I'll, I'll, I'll wait till he actually declares candidacy for the mayor.
He told me today. Yeah.
He's already, he's already campaigning.
Yeah.
I I know there's a couple actually, because when does, but I guess my thing is like for like a officiality, let's say, when does the, uh, when does the clearing season actually start? Is that set in stone or anything?
The signups are going, I I believe they went up on the ninth last time, so they will go up on the ninth this time.
Okay.
Yeah, no, he's, he's advertising himself in the Yellow Pages as running for mayor, Malton.
Yeah, yeah, and he's actively going and speaking to 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 groups and.
Yep, he reached out to me today.
Get rid of this clown.
Yeah, because he's.
Running for mayor.
Yeah.
He's no longer paying attention to what he should be, so give it to somebody who will.
Um, what, uh, did, shh, 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 did you have anything, Malton?
Not not for like legislations, general updates on like the, uh, the pay in the civilian oversight board.
Okay, uh, Cantor, you got anything?
Uh, nothing to propose today. Um, still working on studies for the scheduling of weed. Um, but I think, uh, from my discussions with people, I think uh, a lot of that would be based around the things that PD is aware of, so.
Say Wade?
My accent's a little too strong, weed.
Weed, sorry.
Wade, yeah, it's, sorry about that.
All good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, but yeah, that's the only thing to schedule so far, so just working on that still.
Alan, do you have anything to present?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I see we got, uh, pay me. Uh, we got park.
Parking and assholes.
And assholes.
Big fan of assholes.
Yep, big fan of assholes. Yep.
Big fan of assholes.
Good, good, good one.
Down street.
I think those words come out of my mouth today, but you know, here we are.
Do we, uh, where do you want to start?
Alan?
Oh, yeah. So pay me, I noticed, uh, I'm not getting paid in accordance to my role on city council. I'm getting paid as a judge.
Oh.
So not fair.
Okay, well, I mean, what do what do your expenditures look like these days?
What do you mean?
I I'm just like, you know, like, are you, are you, are you not getting paid like a livable wage or?
No, it's about equity.
Oh, okay, well, I'm owed fifty thousand dollars from the state, then, so is my wife.
Yeah, why is that?
Me too.
Uh, for the, uh, for our audit and, uh, interviewing for the, uh, PCP and selecting the, um, chief of police.
All right, so those duties were part of what?
Uh, part of the PCP.
Which was a power granted to what office?
The mayor's office.
Right, so if you are the mayor, then ostensibly wouldn't a power granted to you be responsibility?
Um, yeah, I suppose, but at the same time, if you apply that logic to the people that were hired to do the audit, wouldn't you say also that that's their responsibility once they are hired to do so?
Yeah, but hired means you get paid compensation.
I was I not, am I not getting paid for being the mayor?
You are, that's what I'm saying.
All right, well.
It is already part of your job description to do that because it is a power granted to your office. What I'm saying is, is basically the state and the council as part of that action added responsibility, which you already paid for as part of your job description. What I'm saying is that I hold two roles, much like Cantor, much like Dakota, much like Malton.
What are your two roles?
Where I am both a judge and a city council member.
Okay.
So I am getting paid only as a judge, whereas the other people at the table are getting paid as city council members.
It's your responsibility to do those things. That's a responsibility you took on yourself as well.
Right.
So why do you think you should be paid more?
No, I'm saying I should be paid the same.
Same as who?
The other city council members.
How much are they getting paid, Alan?
I don't know. You control that.
How much are you getting paid per hour, Alan? I got, I got it.
I don't know. You control that.
Wait, Matt, Matt signed in. Wait, Matt signed in when he got his money, when he did the audit too?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Uh, when's the last time you picked up your paycheck for Bay City?
Uh, today.
Uh, and how much did you get paid?
Uh, like fourteen K or something.
Okay, um, so after this meeting, uh, or what, like, I assume you'll remember the time that you got your paycheck, right?
Sure.
Um, after this meeting, what you could do is you could go down to Bay City, um, and you can figure out how much exactly you're making, and then maybe suggest a, an actual number to have your pay raised to. Because right now, I I don't, I I do even, you don't know how much you're getting paid per hour.
I'm getting paid what judges get paid.
Okay, uh, but my point is, is if you were, if you were doing, look, I I value a judge's work extensively because my wife has im- imprinted into me how difficult and and in how much work goes into doing that. That said, um, how much work have you done in the realm of actual judgment? You've done some bench trials and stuff like that, right?
What do you mean?
Oh, I'm just wondering how, like, how many hours do you have signed in?
I don't know. What does that have to do with it?
Well, just take a guess, just like a random guess.
What does that have to do with this?
I am wondering how I can justify a pay raise for you if you are not putting in the hours and the time.
I don't, I'm asking for an equitable hourly rate. You're misunderstanding, I think.
I'm not misunderstanding at all, Alan. I I.
Uh, I think you are because your questions are irrelevant to the point I'm making.
This isn't a courtroom, Alan. I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, it's a conversation, right? But we have to get to the same page, right? So we have to understand what we're communicating about. And if we're talking past each other, which it seems like we are, then that's a problem.
Sign in as a council member, though.
I cannot. That's what I'm trying to say to you, Max.
All of us to.
No, I did not.
You assigned us the ability to do that.
Max, Max, I did not.
Who did?
Okay, so here is the thing. I can hire myself as a council member.
Yeah.
I suppose, and then I could sign as that alternatively for the meetings and such.
Yep.
I'm doing it through the proper channels because that would be an executive action that would be wrong. I'm simply asking for the council to allow me to do what is equitable. That's it. Uh, I am not in an authoritative executive body when it comes to pay because you control things like that. So I am coming to you, acknowledging the fact that I cannot, even though I have the technical ability. I can and should not do it on my own, so I'm doing it through proper channels. That's what I'm saying, you're misunderstanding.
Okay, my counterpoint was simply, you don't know how much getting paid, you're paid, you're getting paid per hour. You can't tell me that.
I know that I'm getting paid.
You can't tell me how many hours you've worked in the last week.
I know that I'm.
Why is pay an issue to you right now?
Because for the time I am getting paid, when I'm doing the same work as other city council members, I am getting a lesser rate.
Okay.
Uh, that is all I am pointing out, and I'm asking for the ability as a group for me to make that potentially equitable. That's it.
Okay, uh, I'm mainly just playing devil's advocate. I really don't give a shit if you get paid more money.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't either. I'm just, I'm just explaining that, like, the, the, uh, the points you're raising, I ain't doing what I'm saying. It's just.
Well, no, they, I mean, my point is that if you cannot quantify to me how much money you're making per hour or how many hours you've worked per week, how is it that your pay could be such a pressing issue to you that you would present it to the council right now?
Because it's a matter of rate. And also, as I said to Cantor before this, no one brought anything to me this week to bring up, so I found things to bring up on my own behalf.
Love it. I actually do love that.
Which I did not do for the first, I don't know how long, so.
Like, five weeks. Um, yeah, I I I'm, I'm in favor of you getting a raise. I gotta be honest.
I I just want the ability, can I create the ability for me to sign in as a chief justice instead of a judge?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, why not? Fuck you.
Cool, thank you. Um.
What would be a reasonable rate for that? Probably like, uh.
Whatever the council gets paid.
So I don't actually know the base number that the council's being paid. I can only adjust a percentage of that. So it's whatever we last, whatever we last voted on it for it to be. Excuse me.
I think it was eight fifty.
No, uh, after, after the last, after the last one where we gave ourselves raises, it was a thousand, a thousand dollars.
Max, I sent you.
Saying I wasn't here? Hell, yeah. All right.
Yeah.
Why, Mike?
I sent, I sent you an email with all the numbers.
Ooh.
You can get the ex- actual base and everything.
Uh, city council is eight hundred before tax.
Oh, then it didn't, never got changed. Yeah.
Uh, ju- judges nine hundred before tax. So actually, you've been making more money for the city council.
Well, no, not if, not if, not if it's like whatever triple XP weekend or whatever has been going around.
Oh, that was just for the PD.
Oh, I thought city council made a bunch of money this recently.
Oh, wait, yeah, hold on, um.
Wait, what?
Let me, let me do some math, hang on. Nah, Alan's right. Council has been making more than him. Um. Wait, why, this says doctors are getting, wait, doc, oh, DOC, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, I think they're getting paid the least because it's just inherently, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I mean, they don't deserve money.
Yeah, they're chaos.
Um, yeah, raise it. Um, it, I mean, it's I don't really know the particulars about adding another role like that, so, but I mean, I'm for it. I don't give a shit.
Okay, I can get it figured out. I just wanted your guys' permission as a group, so I'm not doing things on my own, that's all.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, so pay me is approved. I will get equitable compensation in terms of role. Um, let's see. Parking got resolved. Uh, that was again, part of the same issue because I signed as a judge and judges got removed from the city council shared parking. I couldn't take out the car anymore. Uh, but Michael's working on that. And then, uh, oh, asshole. Uh, yeah, I was walking to the bank today because I like to walk because it's good for my knees because I'm old and they're bad. And, uh, I was walking down, uh, to get some bird to throw or some, well, bird, some fucking, uh, you know, breadcrumbs and throw the birds down there and, well, you know, back in the day, I, you know, used to read a lot and I sit at the cafe and you know, sometimes, you know, it's kind of like slow reading, you know, like Tale of Two Cities and such, and well, I'm, I guess I just got immersed at some point in, you know, the sort of existential evaluation of, you know, my place and everything and, you know, I'm out here throwing these breadcrumbs, these birds, and they're finding more happiness than I think I'll ever find in any kind of Alan. Facet.
Who are you, darling? What's wrong?
Yeah, what, what?
I was enjoying his story.
Oh, yeah, uh, so I was going to the bank, right? I was walking to the bank. Uh, my knee was hurting and I, oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna call my PCP. Um, anyway, uh, I was walking in the bank and my knee was hurting. Uh, and and I, okay, so I I get there and I get my money and then I'm like, okay, I'm gonna walk back and I walk back and a tow truck was on the sidewalk going like a hundred miles an hour, almost ran me over, had like a bright green cab with purple headlights. Uh, and I was thinking to myself, I thought a thousand dollars and four points on your license was like a lot of threat.
It is.
But if they don't care and they're just driving a hundred miles an hour on the sidewalk and swerving oncoming lanes and uh, do they not care? Is that not enough fear, you know? Like, do we need more fear? Like, what do I do? Because that guy did not give a fuck. He didn't even stop. He didn't say like, holy shit, are you okay? I'm so sorry. He just fucking kept going. He yelled sorry while speeding by. I barely heard it.
Yeah, I got bulldozed by a tow truck.
Oh, yeah, probably.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I I just.
Pretty bad.
I feel like something, uh, maybe we need to like, can you do your quoted thing with PD, but just for that? I don't know. It just, it seems like.
Ooh.
For like the, the commercial.
They need to control commercial vehicles. I I am goddamn sick of walking around because, look, I I may be one of few people and that's fine. Uh, but I enjoy walking around and I enjoy, you know, bicycling around and taking things slower. And it is fucking crazy that for me to walk from the apartments to my workplace, I almost get run over like three times by a grime truck or a group six truck or a tow truck or, you know, a sanitation truck.
Yep.
We have to control these people.
Eighteen wheelers, Jesus.
I mean, isn't that under reckless driving and the?
But that's, but that's my, not my point is, if the laws are harsh already, are the laws not being enforced? Are people not focusing on that?
Drop their pay.
You know, maybe Dakota has some ideas there.
I mean, we write a lot of speeding tickets, uh, commercial vehicles. Uh, I would have to look into whether or not the vehicle's being pulled over are commercial. I will say, uh,
Honestly, sorry, go ahead, Malcolm.
No, 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 I was gonna say, people might be more inclined to go, you know, are trying to get the car that's going a hundred and thirty as opposed to the grime van that's going ninety in the city.
They don't even have to be going ninety, though. If they're just like on a sidewalk or cutting corners on their turns, that would be enough in theory.
Yeah, uh, I mean, personally, I haven't seen a lot of, uh, vehicles that are used commercially do things like that, but it's obviously, you know, if, uh, if the chief justice is seeing it, I mean, I don't know. I don't know. If people are being pulled over, I'd be interested to see how many times people are actually be, have been charged with, uh, with the commercial vehicle charge, so I can look into that, but, uh, maybe that's the issue.
I mean, I can tell you right now. You can too. You guys don't know that. Let's go. Let's go incidents, hit advanced search and search by the charge.
I mean, given the fact that they're driving these giant trucks, you know, that are far more dangerous than the average vehicle and I just feel like they should be held to.
It's, the charge is not being used enough clearly because since March twelfth, there have been seven instances of this.
Hmm, that's it.
Yeah.
Hell, I see seven instances walking down the street, you know, in five minutes.
Yeah, charges is not being used enough. Because it very clearly, these people are doing this. I don't know if it's just there's other priorities or what, but you know, it is something that I think deserves to be addressed because it, it is fundamentally a ridiculous thing for these gigantic, you know, multi-ton death fucking machines to, to just go everywhere at a hundred miles an hour. It's crazy.
I got bulldozed by a tow truck coming down the highway in my weevil today on the way here. So, and the motherfucker didn't even pause, just literally eating myself and two local cars into the guardrails. It just kept going.
I have to avoid about four different tow trucks per drive down from Toledo to here.
Yeah, now that you mention it, actually, we were, we were chasing a car.
Swerving in the oncoming lanes.
Right in front of us.
Running every red line, going eighty, ninety miles an hour. It's gotta, it's gotta get fixed.
When I was still driving my motorcycle, I'd probably have been bulldozed by a fucking truck at least like I would say, it's like two times a day, two times a day. They, uh, they're insane.
Javon, you got bulldozed like two days ago by.
I know, I know.
Yeah, so clearly, Nagota, uh, I don't, I don't know because four points to me seems very harsh because if you get four points, uh, just for the enhancement charge and the primary charge is, let's just say it's first degree speeding, the officer chooses not to give like the reckless driving felony. Right, say it's first degree speeding, that's seven points.
Yeah.
So you get caught doing that three times, you lose your license. But that charge and those points mean nothing if it's not being used because for this to, you know, have been around for that long and it's been used seven times since March twelfth. I mean, that's a month. Seven times in a month is really bad.
It's once every three days, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I mean, this is the kind of charge that until the behavior is corrected, you should probably see, you know, couple of these a shift, right? At least, you know, three a shift or something.
Okay, I will.
But I would imagine if you, if it was something that was being even remotely considered and prioritized, that seems you know, kind of reason.
Understood. I will communicate that and let everybody know.
Yeah, okay. I'll go by shift three and I'll make a comment tonight. Um, maybe I'll wake up and go to shift one, but yeah, I just want to bring that up because I think that that's an issue that, uh, everyone in the city deals with.
Yeah, I can make announcements too now for PD, so I can also send it out as soon as this is over.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. Uh, and then obviously the ongoing situation with trying to rebalance the entire penal code is still a project. I've solicited preliminary feedback from some judges. Uh, I've opened the door to others if they want to contribute by doing their own efforts. Uh, but I'm trying to, you know, do it right the first time, so it's taken a while. If you guys in particular have any charges or any, you know, things that you feel are not things you want to bring the council because there may be more niche or it's an adjustment rather than a full change. Uh, I would welcome any kind of documented commentary on that. By documented, I mean definitely send me an email or a text or something. Uh, so I have a record of it that I can reference later.
I will get on that. I already have some that people have brought up.
Perfect.
Hmm.
There's some phone call.
Hmm.
Dakota, do you have any idea how, if you guys have ever pulled anyone over for the VDM Act at all?
That is another thing I can look at. I will say it's been, uh, I don't know if people have said this, but there was a period there where nobody could get their car repaired. I don't know how that is now. I haven't had to go get a repair. Uh, but I am not sure and I will find out.
Okay, I'll bring it up next week. In that case, as it is right now, I guess it doesn't make sense.
That all you had, Crane?
Yeah, my stuff, um, Alex, I didn't get a chance to meet with you prior. Anything I need to bring up on behalf of the clerks?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
All internal. Okay, good. And yeah, it's all DOJ said. Also, we do have that panel, I believe was it Kanter volunteer to hear that with, uh?
If they didn't post availability by today, I'm just gonna schedule it for based on, uh,
Yeah.
what I know we're gonna be available for.
Yeah, I should be fully available to just make it happen.
Cool. Wasn't looking, looking at scheduling it for Tuesday, uh, this upcoming Tuesday? Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, as long as it's after seven Eastern.
Yeah, I got you. I know your schedule. All right, perfect.
Yes, Eda, do you have anything?
Um, I don't have anything to propose, but, um, I've been mainly busy, uh, dealing with, uh, event things. Um, Andy conducted her week-long, uh, the games event, which just ended on Friday. Uh, it had a wonderful turnout and, uh, yeah, so I did that. Um, I've also reached out to a couple of other people. I spoke to Michael about possibly installing a microphone at Bahama Mama's. Um, I spoke to Kermy Fulker about a, um, a sanitation drive of sorts because apparently there's an issue with trash building up down in the sewers and which we have a bit of an issue considering that it's felony trespassing to go down into the sewers. Uh, you know, we, we could make an exception for sanitation workers, but then what's to stop people from just going in, signing in and then going down into the sewers? So, um, I don't know exactly how to go about, uh, circumventing that.
Sewer passes.
No. Not gonna work.
Yeah, it's, uh.
I mean, is, is the trash causing like blockage? Is there really an issue with just letting the trash pile up in the sewer?
I mean, I would think after a while that it would just start to give people constant headaches, you know, the smell and, you know, because from what I was told, uh, Kermy said, uh, that the couple of times that he had been down there before, you know, it was deemed a felony. Uh, he said that there were literally, there's like a, apparently a pit down there, um, but it's like literally full of trash.
Yeah, I've seen that pit before.
Cool.
Yeah, so I've been trying to think of a way, uh, you know, to possibly come up with something that is monitored by you know, either, you know, ourselves or, you know, trusted government employees to kind of monitor specific entrances for the sanitation crews to go down for, uh, you know, a, a limited period of time to try and, you know, and then we give them like a bonus for their time, uh, on top of what they earn, you know, just from the materials.
Operation Sewer Cleanup.
Yeah, I, uh, I'm still trying to iron out the details of it. Uh,
You know, you know, basically, uh, anyone in the city can pick up these bags now.
Yes, yeah, that's.
It could be a citywide initiative to get everyone down there and be like, hey, grab a bag and then drop it on the surface.
So do we just deem it for like one specific, you know, time period? Like, hey, right now is the only time that you can go down there without getting hit with felony trespassing?
Is it, is it illegal right now?
We, we did deem it, yes.
Technically, yeah.
Has it been posted?
Uh, I don't really know. I know everyone's aware of it. They've been yelling about it a lot, but I don't remember where it would be.
Yeah, word spread real quick on that one.
Yeah, we put signups, signs up on the entrances so people knew not to go down.
Yeah.
We kind of looped it in with an existing charge, so nothing was actually posted.
With felony trespassing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because it was deemed, uh, you know, public utility, so being in there is trespassing. Even though apparently people live down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a, I had some EMS talking about how one of them lives down there and I just had to tell them there's no way I can endorse that. I, I did test in down there, so that there's radioactivity down there. It's not safe. Uh, so, um, I told them I couldn't really help them. Sorry.
You got an EMS that lives in the fucking sewers?
Apparently, um, but I'm, I'm not gonna fight to do that. Maybe they should learn to live elsewhere.
Yeah, what, there is a strange attachment to living in the sewers.
There really is. Some people are very attached. It was almost like the adoption stuff where, but
Like.
Really care.
There's a whole culture around it.
I, there, there was a culture. There's no culture anymore. They're like, there was, there was a bunch of weird fucking degenerate, like social reject sewer people that had been down there for years.
Yeah, I actually met a few of them.
Yeah, like dope, that, that's the culture. Their culture's dead.
There was a guy who couldn't even be.
Probar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was a guy who couldn't even breathe the air up here because he was so used to the toxins down there.
That feels like a great example of why it is not safe.
I know.
As the healthcare liaison who, who did tests and all that down there, uh, no one should be going down there unless they are, uh, in a bunch of, uh, like protective gear, uh, under very limited conditions.
For those of us with common sense, but you know, but yeah, so like I said, uh, I did speak to Kermy. Um, I am trying to sort out something uh, to try and alleviate the trash issue of the sewers, but, you know, that's gonna be interesting.
He messaged me too. Hold on, let me read what he said.
Yeah, he told me, he told me about the conversation that he had with you in the text messages, so.
Um. Two days ago. Well, first of all, he showed me the heat map of trash.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, he said, I need to work a deal with the city slash state showed me the heat map. He said, I need to clean these. My OCD. I said, I wonder if some of those are coming from the sewers. I said, talk to Eda, maybe arrange a trash gathering event. She will probably compensate you. Uh, he said, I am convinced that ninety percent of trash is either in the sewers or houses. And then he said in all caps, I tried talking to Eda. Issue is people's houses. It's not an issue anymore, fortunately. Uh, I need you to like, let me sieve raid. I'll roll a D twenty. Then he showed me the D twenty.
I told him there was no way in hell that we were doing that, but, you know, now, now it's not an issue.
A six out of twenty, which I don't, I really don't know, but then he said, never mind, this convo never happened. I said, LaMao, uh, in parentheses, I didn't actually laugh out loud. Uh, I said, people would be super paranoid about letting you in their house to pick up trash, but it is a problem. I wish those bags would go away in people's houses, uh, which come true. Uh, I'm, he said, I'm more concerned about the headache CBH, valid concern that, um, and I, I think, why don't we arrange a time next week where we get everyone together? Uh, we drop the, the trespassing, felony trespassing. Uh, we, uh, we just get everyone in the city, go down there and just grab a trash bag and then bring it up to a bunch of, uh, things up on the surface. It's gonna be chaos, though.
It is. That's, that's the other thing. It's like trying to manage it in a way that won't basically be like, hey, here's a whole bunch of money criminals coming rob everybody.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Because we can't have nice things in the city.
Like, we can get some cops down there too. I don't know.
Well, we need patrol, right?
Well.
No, I had this in high school.
What about patrol?
As I said, we need them to patrol, right?
No.
Uh, yeah.
Thirteen-year-old hoodie.
One or two cops, though.
Alright, still in very good condition, but the hoodie string finally like slipped into the hood.
The ones that like to sit on the side of the road and do traffic citations can spare some other time to sit on the side of the sewer.
I just had to like manually do it with my fingers. That shit hurted.
Yeah, could do. That's what I had a brief little, you know, I was spitballing ideas and, you know, just trying to like designate it's been bugging me all fucking day. Employees who would want to volunteer to like watch the entrances because I want to make sure that, you know, people aren't trying to like, you know, get out of the system as people love to do and have people who actively participate in actually cleaning the trash, you know, be rewarded for their time on top of what they're earning, you know? Uh, and not be robbed, so.
Well, uh, we'll, I'll organize something for next week. Uh, I'll request that the chief of police give me like one or two cops to station at the top of these manholes.
Okay.
To, uh, you know, receive people that maybe are wounded or, uh, to solve disputes.
Yeah, they could give us security, yeah.
Yep, uh, keep them from going down there because I don't want them to catch the fucking malaria or whatever the fuck's going on down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's bad.
And then we just have people fan out, go down there and get bags. Uh, I'll set it for maybe next Thursday. We can do this.
Okay.
Uh, and I'll make so, I'll make a couple of state announcements and whatever. Maybe I'll, I'll get Kermy to promote it too. Um, yeah, I'll set a time and date after this meeting.
You know, a crazy idea. Uh, if the sewers are dangerous and we don't want to expose people to it, but we have this problem with the trash, right?
Yeah.
Uh, why don't we allow Bobby and Carmine to put ankle bracelets on people and then they escort them down in the sewers and make the inmates pick up trash?
Good idea. Wow. The, the problem is that, um, they might not be detained for long enough to like, you know, eventually they could be like, hey, I want to go home and then they're like.
Yeah, and you know, and that's fair, right? I'm just saying the option, right? Because there may be some people who would like to go pick up trash, Bobby and Carmine. I can't imagine why.
Yeah.
But, you know.
I mean, I'm down. I think that's a great idea.
Or maybe they could use it to haze their new tryouts and hires, right? They, they, if there's no inmates, they make the lower DOC guards go pick up trash. Then Bobby and Carmine can live out their authoritative fantasies over their employees.
Speaking of which.
They sort of did that yesterday.
Oh, God.
I do have something tied into that.
Hi, Booby.
Crane.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hi, Kyle.
We were talking to them because they want to really use their bus up there, uh, to transport, I guess, or pick up inmates from PD. But seeing as that's outside their zone, and I talked to Beric about this, they said that
Hey, Bobby, you got this. Hey, Bobby.
To, what, follow them all the way up to the prison? Is this something we would want them to do to pick up inmates, take them back to the Bolingbrook? Or do we not care about that?
Uh, hold on, we gotta fucking slap hands. In you, alright? Fuck, buddy. Alright? Boom. Hey, you got this. I don't have any.
Hmm.
Like, hey, hey, ooh, you got this, Bobby! You got this, Bobby! You got this!
Is he gonna fuck it up today?
Hey, Bobby, we were just talking about something that you could do with, uh, your DOC recruits.
Speak up, Bobby.
Speak up.
Uh, we actually held the DOC's first, uh, boot camp. It was a ninety-nine percent attrition rate. A lot of a lot of people died that day. A lot of trainees died that day, but there were some that made the cut. Approximately six made the cut.
Is one of them called Dizzy? You don't even know, motherfucker?
And, uh, nobody but that name.
Oh, interesting, because he, he thought he passed.
Is he? Well, if I don't remember, he probably didn't pass. Probably wasn't cool then.
Yeah, fair. Uh, before you go over that, um, we were thinking about having you slap ankle bracelets on prisoners and then clean up the sewers with them.
Mister Mayor, I think that we should not only slap an ankle bracelet on them, but we should chain them all up, kind of like one of those lines, like, they're like.
Chain, a chain gang.
Yeah, a chain gang. We should make them a, I don't know, like a work on the casino or something. We should make them a mine, uh, mine like, like diamonds or something. I, I don't know. What is the, what is the city, city need diamonds or something?
Always need diamonds.
They yearn for the mines.
Um, well, let, let this be a launching point for that, then. Sewer cleanup, um, have you had, uh, are you having any trouble with those buses by chance?
Buses are, don't operate.
Okay, so they're just like inoperable right now?
Can't, you can lockpick it. Uh, we, we can, uh, lockpick the bus. Uh, I got, something's wrong with the transmission or something. It just doesn't go forward.
Okay.
It'll, it'll back up and not forward.
Uh, oh, wow.
Uh, are you, are you willing to, uh, start bringing people down into the sewers and having them pick up some trash?
Mister Mayor, I'd be willing for, uh, anything, uh, the amazing council would, uh, what, any chance the council would give me.
Okay, just an option, Bobby. You know, we were just thinking, you know, we, we have a problem with trash in the sewers and you have both, you know, low rung employees and inmates who you control. And, you know, I might give you something to, you know, have them do.
Any way you could get the police to not stick their nose in what I do in the sewers then? Cause, uh, I guarantee you, the day this happens, uh, cops are gonna storm in me.
You'll, uh, you'll be, you'll be given an exception on the felony trespassing stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Alright.
If, 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 if this occurs, this will be something where, you know, we will go announce it at PD meetings. It'll be communicated to High Command through Dakota and, you know, other city council members. Uh, we need, you know, as long as there's clear communication ahead of time, everything be fine.
What about, uh, unruly, what about unruly inmates that, uh, that need to be, uh, punished in the sewers for not, uh, working hard enough? Am I gonna get a charge for beating them or shooting them?
Hmm, no, cause they, they're escaping at that point, right?
Are they? Well, Bobby, you wouldn't be, uh, carrying a gun, you know, outside the prison, would you?
Oh, no, 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 no. Carmine holds my gun for me.
Right.
It's, it's a communal gun.
Yeah, cause you don't have a license to possess a gun, right?
Right.
It, it's a communal gun. Carmine's gonna be holding the firearm.
Well, if it's registered to you and Carmine's holding it, that's still illegal.
Yeah, that's fine in the prison, Bobby, not fine outside the prison.
Carmine's gonna hold his gun, his firearm.
Good, okay, great.
Uh, I think that if they're not following your orders to clean up trash down there, then they should be, uh, brought into line if they're prisoners. I don't think that, uh, I think they should listen to you when they're down there. Otherwise. Go on.
Uh, what about in the event that it, uh, an inmate, um, escapes the confines of the sewers? Do I have free rein to go retrieve said inmate?
Alright, I'm starting to see a problem with this, actually.
Yeah, the more you're talking, the more I'm seeing my worst.
The more, more I hear about this, the more I don't like it.
Yeah, forget the, forget the trash stuff, Bobby.
Yeah, let's scratch the trash stuff.
Can you present the, uh, the recruit, recruit shit that you got?
Yeah, none of them have felonies. Uh, we have Gary Kevin.
Okay.
Alright, I mean, hold on, let me pull up, let me pull up my report, cause we wrote down your stuff last time.
Yeah.
One second. Alright, approved guards. Okay, go ahead.
Gary Kevin, you need a state ID?
You already put that one last time. Could keep going.
Scotty Bard?
And Bobby, these are ones you would like to hire, correct?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Scotty's the fuck guy. Please take him.
Yeah, yeah, you can have him. Uh, he's been warned he cannot, uh, claim that he is licensed with medical because that, you know, transcends the prison. But if he does medical in there, I can't stop him, fuck it.
Anybody else?
He was recording my feet earlier. Oh, that was the one with the video, wasn't it?
Villager?
Ville Adger.
Well, we call him Pillager in Dogtown.
Yeah, cause he's angry.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, next.
We have, uh, Chastanisberg. I don't, I don't know how to pronounce his full name.
Chastanisberg Andersonis Bergensen.
Yeah, 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 that, that works.
I hate the Dutch.
Oh, my God.
True, dude. Frickberry.
Anybody else?
We have Richard White Q, I think. Weird ass spell last.
Yes, please take him.
Okay, I gotta, I gotta rest my eyes for a couple of minutes, guys.
Then we have, uh, we have a few more, but, uh, if we can only have, uh, six or if we only have a set amount, uh, we do have a few, a few more names. Do you wanna know those names?
He got kicked out last week, though.
Uh, you want more names in general?
Well, uh, these are just like, if we have a baseline that we, uh, if we have a set number that we can only hire certain, uh.
Yes.
Who's, who's approved? Who, who are people you, you would like to have considered that past, you're like, whatever?
Um, oh, Carmella, but she has a felony which might be a problem.
Yes, uh, what's? Wha- what's her felony?
It's reckless evading?
She has two times reckless evading.
Okay, anybody else?
Uh, Pigeon, he doesn't have any felonies. A cap Terranova.
He's also a doctor, that motherfucker. He hasn't worked once. Piece of shit.
Well, that's not a good sign. Anybody else?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Lily Dubois? I think that's your last name. She, she fucking, she creepy?
Okay, anybody else?
Then an old man named Rusty Bumblebear.
Yeah, today I learned.
I think Carmella's the only one with a felony.
Uh, Bobby, I'm obligated at this time to suggest, even though he does not qualify, Erwin Dundee for undisclosed reasons.
Hey, you know what? Yeah, Erwin Dundee, yeah, put that one in there.
Uh.
He's got like seven times attempted murder of a government employee.
Yeah, that's.
He kidnapped me to say this.
I wanna, what about Leonardo Slacks? I wanna go ahead, I wanna recommend him. Leonardo Sl- Leo Slacks. Uh, put him on the list.
Yeah, fucking take him.
Does he know he's going on the list, Bobby? Cause I'm gonna message him right now.
No, no, it's, it's gonna be surprised. You know, I think that he needs to change his career. Oh, just in case he gets fired or something, he can always, uh, he can always have Dogtown.
That's so nice of him, dude.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, that's it.
Alright, I've got, uh, all those people recorded. Guess we'll go ahead and hire your first batch of, uh, people that you approved, which should be Gary, Scotty, Winslow, Ville, Adger, Chastanisberg, you know, the Dutch guy. And then Richard White Q, White Key or whatever.
Thank you so much, Supreme Ruler.
Uh, Chief Justice, Bobby.
You don't think Supreme Ruler sounds better?
I mean, it's cool, which is not accurate, but, you know, whatever. Um, okay, uh, did you have anything else from DOC? I know the mayor's kinda resting his eyes, but.
Um, I, I was, uh, one, we had a lifer up there who goes by the name of Lou Myers. Is there any, uh, paperwork on that man about what he did? His name is Lou Myers. I recently got an MDT profile made for him. But he, he's been in there for like twenty-some years, he told me. But I, I just don't know if, uh, I don't really know what he did. He told me that he killed a bunch of people, but I don't know if that's true.
What's the name?
Lou Myers.
I don't recognize him as.
Yeah, I know me either.
I mean, Dakota, is that name ringing any bells from back?
No, I think it's a very long, long-serving, uh, lifer.
The lifer lifers.
That's a lifelifer.
Alright. I'm a circus, not my monkeys.
Yep.
Alright, yeah, alright, I'm gonna let Bobby out.
Thanks, Bobby.
Have a nice day, Supreme Justice Overlord Ruler of the world, Shadow Leader.
Alright.
Oh, my God.
Co Baron of Dogtown.
Um, question, are we able to do anything about these situations with the food stalls?
Uh, what do you mean situation? Are you talking about like, there's like problems with them?
Uh, no, no, not like, not like the, the issues with, uh, but more like, um, how they're rented. Um, like, right now, somebody can literally camp out in the admin office, wake up, rent one for two weeks. But then all of them are gone in one storm and anybody else in another storm has no chance of ever getting it. So, I was wondering if maybe we could rethink that and do like maybe the old market stalls back in the day where they're rented for a storm instead. That way it gives people in, you know, other schedules a chance. And can we limit the amount of stalls that people can rent? Because people are renting.
People are not renting multiple.
As a rumor and not true.
So Alexander River doesn't have two stalls?
I have checked the records and every time this has been brought to me, it has not been true. I will check again.
Okay. No, no, I mean, if you've already checked, then yeah, th- this is just what was, uh, what was relayed to me as, uh, so I wanted to bring it forward, but.
I heard people are selling ammo and shit out of those. That's crazy. You're gonna just get a sandwich with a side of a box of ammo?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if something has changed, but initially when they came out, there was a wave of panic about somebody rented all the stalls and that was not the case then. And I heard another wave of it and I checked in and the answer still was no, so.
Well, given it's Alexander River, he likes to talk a lot of shit, too. So he could just be telling people that and they're just taking his word for it, so.
Yeah, as far as I know, that is not the case.
Okay, alright.
But he also told everyone that Crane and the government were gonna give group six workers guns.
Exactly.
And he had been given one when he in fact just bought one using his PD weapons license.
Yep.
But he lost his job for it. Oh, no.
So maybe I wouldn't trust him on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I get that. But, uh, I, I think, uh, I don't know, it, finding a solution to allow people of differing schedules a chance would also maybe be something we could possibly look into. Um, cause as it stands right now, it's just the same people over and over again, taking all of them and nobody else has a, a shot at all.
Uh, it's something, I mean, I don't know if that would come from us. I think that's probably, something we could recommend. I mean, we could just make legislate, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, that's something we need to talk about, but I'll, uh, I'll run the chain yet.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Are you Fury outside? Voice I'm hearing outside.
Uh, is it possible to take like a ninety-second bathroom break?
Yeah, sure.
We should probably just take five because the mayor's still.
Okay, I just wanted, okay, okay. Appreciate it.
I'm crazy, I wanna talk in this board real quick about some things. Unless are you taking a break as well?
Um.
Uh, you can go ahead and stop the recording, I guess, during, uh, breaks, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Or as, or as like DOJ matters, uh, the, the only one who has, uh, reached out for a bar that, uh, you may consider giving one is, uh, good, good old Mr. Pred, who I, I hear shouting out there. Uh, we, we need a replacement for Rami, blah, 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 but I mean, ultimately, yeah.
Pred wants to be a DOC apparently, so.
Oh, why was he not brought up in that, uh, list right here that Bobby just did?
Bobby texted it to me after he walked out of the room.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, uh, uh, I think it's a little bit of a conflict if, uh, there's a, a defense attorney who gets used and then goes up to be a DOC personally. But, uh, I, I will defer to your ultimate wisdom on that one. Uh, or it's just like a lawyer thing. I mean, Pred has the, uh, he has the experience, he has the gumption. He's gonna be a problem child, but he's only gonna be my problem child for another two weeks here. So it's, uh, ultimately, obviously up to you if you want, uh, the, the next head of bar to, to deal with that headache. But I, I, I would recommend him for a, uh, a bar at least.
Sorry, Johnny. I was typing out a text message and I didn't wanna lose my place.
Oh, no, you're good.
How are you?
Oh, good, oh, good. Uh, I just want to, yeah, how long, how, you know, how long?
Hmm.
Well, you know, they used to last four and five hours, but, uh, um, lately, we've been able to.
Has he done any paralegal work or anything? Uh, I need to verify. I, I know he's been advertising for, but I, I don't know if he's, uh, you know, gotten any like cases and stuff yet, but I, I could verify with him. But I, I know he has been advertising as it.
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, you know, realistically, uh, I think he should be treated like anyone else in terms of applying to get a bar, right?
Fair enough.
He was given a bar back when he was a cop, but that was because we had.
Well, now, the, hang on now, if they're only detainees, it's legal. That's what, that's what the US government said. Can't be a prisoner of war. It has to be a detainee of war.
No problem. Uh, but you know, if he's shotgunning, you know, jobs.
What's to come is going to be the, uh.
Yeah, that's, that's easy. Cause I, I just talked about it real quick. As, as far as like a general policy level, do you have any?
So basically sand wing?
Couldn't come down to like an ether war type thing?
Stalls thing? Uh, cause I just rented one today.
Uh, I don't think that we should have lawyers working in a Wallace, uh, black hole.
I mean, I, I heard that as well.
Oh, is that Alex River?
Yeah, that's how he got it. He said.
Okay, I will, uh, talk to him, see where his, uh.
Wasn't available in his pizza stand.
Sure, that's fine. Also, uh, what do you think about Ariel Whitlock?
Control, so I've actually gotten recommendations on. They're good. Earl, I, I just went downstairs. He, he seems okay. He says he's paralegaled under a couple of people, but I haven't received any official recommendations for anyone.
Yeah, no, it's a pack of prize.
He's given me four names he's paralegaled under.
Alright, uh, yeah, I, I see no problem. My Abeline shouldn't just get a bar.
Yeah, uh, she, she's received recommendations.
Alright, um, can you get me, uh, I actually asked at one point, somebody for the info.
Uh, Abeline's? I don't, you think you ever asked me for? Does she not have?
I just, at some point, someone I asked for info.
Does she not have a?
Did a reset during the meeting.
So you need a staff profile is what I'm saying.
Oh, I see.
Birch, I asked Birch after a trial and he recommended a couple of people. And I said, okay, yeah, I could think about hiring them. Send me their staff info.
Let's go.
Okay, do, do, do you wanna hire Whitlock now or do you wanna, want me to check on his, uh?
Kick, kick the tires, you know?
Kick the tires? Okay, alright, I'll do that.
So, cause I, uh, Whitlock seems like somebody where he's doing the work. Uh, I'm just, you know, I wanna make sure that he's, uh, personable.
Yeah, I got you.
So.
I will check on that. Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go just.
How's it going, Alex?
How's it going, alright?
Anything, uh, non-council related you wanna talk about? So we got a break.
Yeah.
Uh, been having some of the clerks solely, uh, being able to accept the booth items. I don't really want them to do the booth licenses yet.
Alright.
Um. Mostly be, I, I don't, I don't actually remember why I wanted it that way. I think it was just so they'd be like a little bit more comfortable with how things are rolled out.
Sure, I'm not supposed to judge me either way.
Yeah, probably like give some people, uh, the go ahead if they wanna approve booths and stuff. Um, other than that, uh, no, not much to talk about, I guess.
Cool. Alright, I'm playing Sudoku.
What's going on? Yeah, I feel you. I'm playing an idle game.
Nice.
You know, necessarily the most, um, normal, I guess, you know? Every once in a while, we like to try and do something fun and interesting, so.
Fine, Crane. I'm trying to play video games.
So it was confirmed, Alan, that Alan. So it was confirmed, Alan, that Alexander River, uh, he had somebody else uh, rent out a stall uh, so that way, cause it had a drink machine that his didn't, so. That's why he claims to have two. So technically, he doesn't have it. It's just that he's working with somebody who also got it.
Makes sense.
Yeah, that's kind of like the thing.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, hey, that's just the free market, right? Um, that's fine.
Right, right.
Like hard stuck on this segment of the game though.
So that way other people get a shot too.
Yeah, that's, that's something we can look into.
Awesome. Thank you.
Uh, I'll, I'll actually refer that right now.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, like this is, this is the stagnant period where I'm just grinding more and more. To get past this part, I guess, uh, where I need the glove upgrades and stuff like that.
Okay, now I actually have.
It's a weird amount of grinding for the glove. Hello? I think we're on a break still. Uh, should be back soon.
Understood.
So I need to get, so like I've knocked out a good portion of this, um. Free, it's just a lot of these, so I have to kill mobs and a lot of them. I don't know. My souls go over here when I kill mobs and then I use those to get these points over here. Got a good part of the tree knocked out and I've only played this for a couple of days, so. I guess it just kinda depends on stuff, but right now I'm just trying to knock out these quests too, but I have to wait four hours for this portal to reset. Used to be eight. Uh, I can get it down to two, otherwise I, I just have to swipe. I've been fairly non-idol on it. I mean, yeah, I just, I don't know, jump around, collect coins, hit the boxes while I'm like doing something. Right now I just need to let it go so I can defeat these slimes. It's actually such a good thing that I am in this world right now because slimes spawn pretty regularly in this one and I need to get two thousand of them. Decent idler though. I kinda like it.
Yeah, what's going on?
Yeah, I think my problem mostly right now is just I'm getting time gated.
I mean, if he wants to, it's up, yeah, I mean, it's whatever you guys wanna do with your, whatever Ursula wants, you know, whatever you wanna do, just find me.
Okay, as long as you trust them, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yo, how's it going, Brick? Uh, I'm in a little bit of a predicament. Um, I'm at the city hall, uh, filming the council meeting right now. And I am gonna have to hit the hay. Uh, it's uh, it's with the mayor and everybody, uh. Would you be able to grab a camera and, and come down here and just film the rest of it? There's about an hour left. Alright, yeah, yeah. Grab a camera from, uh, from, uh, Earl and it's on the very last floor of the uh.
The mini games are fun too. Gotten a lot better at this, actually. Real question is, is if I'm going to fuck it up on the third segment or not? But the third segment? It's not so bad. Hey, locking in, locking in, locking in, locking in.
I see you on Pred.
Alright, see you. Uh, I will be in a, I will be in a bit, yeah. Get in my bar.
I know you ain't got any money, Bobby, but yeah, I'll file your, wait, what appeal? You wanna appeal these kidnapping charges? Fu- fuck no. You're guilty, man.
Even Pred knows that's a dumb case.
No. Perfect run. Fuck. Damn it. Fuck. Fuck.
Poor Bobby.
Everyone uh, here? Yeah. Uh, we were, we left up on the Edda, right?
Uh, I just wrapped up all my stuff, yeah.
Michael Simone, you got anything to present?
Uh, I think the only thing I have is finding people that are leaving their fucking trailers at the side of the road.
Yes, please.
I think that's uh, that is needed. Felony littering.
There's your felony.
Of any industrial equipment such as tractor trailers, et cetera.
Okay.
That works.
Now, would this be just a fine? Points on their license.
Yeah, I don't know if it should be a felony. I was kinda just grandstanding. I would push for not a felony, personally. Yeah, I agree. I don't think it should be.
Yeah, no.
Uh, let's see. I mean, y- you just call it like what, uh? Industrial littering or? I don't know what you're, yeah, industrial littering and then, you know, we just make it irrelevant time and fi- and I think, I think our current uh, application is good. It just needs to be used more. Uh, I think a thousand dollars and four points is like very uh, ha- should have a chilling deterrent effect. If those charges are used, I think that is plenty to deserve people.
Uh, shouldn't they be commercial littering if anything, or is that just the same?
Commercial, that works, yeah.
Yeah, that works.
As for the fine, I don't know, I just.
Yeah, I keep choking on the last part because the last jump is like.
I think, I think that has a chilling effect. I think a thousand dollars. Two to four points. What's that a moving violation? So.
The existing commercial charges are twelve fifty.
That's, that's, that's with the enhancement.
Okay, okay, okay.
I, I see the original in the, in the penal code, in the backend anyway, when I'm editing the charges, so.
Got it.
Yeah, I think a thousand dollars makes sense as the base for the fine. I'm just trying to question the concept of, of the points because it does demonstrate a lack of responsibility when it comes to operating large commercial vehicle. Uh, but it is not necessarily a moving violation.
So. We'll go with two?
I don't know if it should be any.
Oh.
I, I think that's fair, honestly. It's like, um, it's like separate to their driving, right? Back down after they've dropped it off, then fuck yeah, uh, but you know, yeah.
These are, are, you know, they
Points are a reflection of uh, of how you've driven on the road in the past in a way that has broken the standard, right? So either by, you know, driving too fast or in the wrong lanes, turn signals, you know, on, um, ignoring, you know, police vehicles, all that kinda stuff, right? But you, you, there's an area in my head where I could find someone who drives perfectly fine, but just is an asshole who dumps the trail wherever they want when they're done with it.
Have these only been found on the side of the road? Have any of these made their way into the road?
Uh, I mean.
Now, if you, if you told me that someone detached the trailer while moving and just let it fucking, you know, fall or whatever, then I could see that as a moving violation. I'd say that's covered under the unsafe, you know, enhancement, right?
Right.
And maybe even reckless driver or something of that. Uh, but I think just, if we just found a trailer on the side of the road and you saw someone ditch it and then they pulled back on the road and they drove away in the speed limit and in the right lane, uh, I don't think they should get points on their license.
They, okay, they dumped them because that means they can make it down to the city quicker. So obviously they're not, not keeping the speed limit. That is the primary reason for them to doing it in the first place. Also, yes, Dakota, to answer your question, they have been nudged into the road and have caused chaos usually up north.
Yes.
Yeah, but that falls under one of those like.
Oh, that's, that's not on, on them, but they're leaving them in a, in a place that can cause these issues with this, which is a primary problem. It's not just littering, it's also.
Yeah.
How much do they, how much do they make for transporting that load?
It depends on how long they go. Do they wanna be legal or do they wanna be not?
Okay, no, no, no. I'm asking uh, normal versus without the thing.
Oh, I don't fucking know.
Like what's the time, right?
It's, it's a min-max thing. It's about.
Oh, well, that's what I'm doing. I'm gonna break it down. So if, wait, let me call Marlo.
Yeah, I know. I actually counted, God, when I went up, when I went home the other night, I think I passed like ten on the side of the road, on either side of the gas station.
Hey, Marlo.
Fucking gross.
Uh, just need some data from you, uh, for a council here. Uh, how long does it take you to do the big run with the trailer? No, 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 let me rephrase this. How long does it take you to do the big run with the trailer? If you don't dump the trailer in Polito or on the side of the road and you bring it all the way back? And you drive like, you know, eh, let's say, and you drive as fast as you can? Sure, sure. Maybe, I'm not sure, but, but let me just ask you this. Let's say it's not much slower, okay? Okay, and how much do you uh, how, and what's, what's the total runtime on average? Oh no, I mean, I'm like in minutes. How long is a run? Oh, for the full run? Wow, okay, I didn't know that. Okay, uh. And how much do you get paid for that run?
Thank you again.
Got it. Okay, um, we're just, we're talking about uh, people dumping the trailers on the side of the road. Yeah, we're trying to figure out what's the best way to combat it because, you know. Exactly. It's like, how do I, you know, so, so like, I, we could make it so that, you know, uh. Yeah, I don't think there's a mechanism by which the officers could investigate that because right now the way it works is you'd have to see a track. Well, you have to see like a tractor trailer truck without the trailer. And then you'd have to somehow also be able to tell that they're not just driving to pick up the trailer, you know, like how do you know they've finished the run and they're driving back, right? So maybe, so maybe we just, so maybe we just uh, find people, so if they're seen dumping it, you could find them, I guess. But I mean, there's enough parking up there in Polito where they could park it in like the chicken factory parking lot or, you know, there's plenty of places, right? Yeah. Okay, well, I'll uh, see what we can do. Alright, thanks for the info, Marlo. Appreciate you, yeah. Yeah, okay, so he said they make six K run. The runs are between forty-five minutes to an hour. Uh, he said ditching the trailer maybe saves you a minute on the drive back.
So people are just being dumb.
Well, there's, there's some other issues, I guess, with like the way the trailers are connected to the trucks and how, you know, uh, the wind hits them on the highway at certain speeds and, you know, there's a whole bunch of complaints, but basically uh, it seems like this is more of just like a people being people thing. Uh, I don't really know how to regulate it, other than just trying to get the police to do the what they already do, which is the, the unsafe operation of a large commercial vehicle because. Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I think, I think they should be able to park them at the truck stop or at the chicken factory parking lot, maybe? Would that be fair if they're in a parking spot?
Yeah, no, that, that's what it says.
Yeah. Yeah, unsafe as well. A cop or a lawyer could easily articulate leaving a trailer on the side of the road is negligent, so. Yeah, I think, I think that we probably have the charges to handle it from talking to Marlo. Uh, I think that actually it's probably even more efficient for them to do it in the truck stop parking lot than on the side of the road. Cause they're at the truck stop anyways, probably save them time. They might have to back in somewhere, I don't know. But it doesn't sound like they save much time. I was thinking we could like set the fine to be proportional enough so that it's not worth the time you save, but you don't save enough time for it to be relevant, so. Sounds like people are just doing it to do it.
Uh, when you say the truck stop, do you mean the gas station in Polito? Like a large one? Okay, and.
It has, it has large parking spaces there.
Do we know how many of those trucks go?
Like there are, there are trailers that locals park there.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I know that, but I'm, now I'm thinking like if this happens X amount of times a day, is that gonna be overflowing with vehicles close to gas pumps?
That's why I said they could use the chicken factory parking lot.
Okay.
That thing's gigantic and I've never once in, you know, nine years seen that thing filled ever, so.
True. Yeah, cause there's the ga- the charging stations now in the parking lot of the Polito gas station, so.
I mean, maybe, maybe just encourage the, the officers to look at this overall, right? I mean, the other, the other question is like, Marlo just texted me, I never thought of this. Uh, is it something where that could be become part of the tow ecosystem?
I don't know if they can tow them. The issue is also there's no information on the trailers. You have to do an.
Uh, so you don't know, yeah.
Yeah, we tried to go up there and look and we couldn't get a, a reading on them. You have to do an ad, like make.
Got it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, then, yeah, I'm open to suggestions. It seems like kind of a hard problem to tackle, um. I think overall, we, we solved most of this stuff with commercial vehicles by encouraging PD to use the law we already put in about unsafe operation because, you know, a thousand dollars and four points is game changing. Uh, I mean, that's. Speaking of which, uh, the other charge. Yeah, there's some issues with that. I, I need to talk to. How would you articulate that? Well, so here's the problem. Cause I, I, I'm sorry, I had Matt Rhodes yesterday, fucking Jesus Christ, man. He, he wasn't sure how to do it. Well, no, but that's the problem is, is I mean, he's usually good at find, using the niche things. Um, so here's the problem. Uh, I was under the impression when the uh, law was put in that there was like a threshold whereby it was safe to care. That coincided with the space of the truck. Uh, but apparently, uh, you can only see the contract weight for the current contract. And so if they've already picked up the stuff for like two other contracts and they accept a third, the contract limit that's displayed on the manifest paperwork is for the third only. So by that logic, the, you're only allowed to do one pickup at a time, doing any kind of commercial delivery work, which is nonsense. So by that logic, the you're only allowed to do one pickup at a time, doing any kind of commercial delivery work, which is nonsense going dumb. Because no one's going to drive to a place, pick up one thing with a gigantic truck and then go to another place and depot it without the efficiency of picking up multiple things at once. What I'm what I was trying to control was it being overweight, which I don't know is even really possible.
Uh, it it is possible. One, two, um, my wife and I did a ride along.
Yeah.
For grime and we we discovered essentially that it is possible for these big semi drivers to, um, do a bunch of different contracts and not technically be in breach of any one of the cargo manifests that they're issued. So long as they're, so long as they're careful about what sort of cargo they're picking up. For example, they don't take two electronics contracts, therefore they won't ever be in the in breach of the one hundred, one thousand KG uh, weight limit. Uh, and the way that I advise cops to be able to enforce it, when I, when I talked about it was, hey, you know, if you spot check these these cargo holds and there's one thousand, if there's more than one thousand kilograms of one type of cargo, then they are in breach of this particular law. That's what we discovered.
Yeah, I I so I understand. Well, and and this is what I'm trying to point out is, uh, I envisioned that there was a overall weight limit in the truck. And there was a certain proportionality of that weight limit that was safe. And so, you know, I don't, I didn't know if that was a couple of contracts you were allowed to carry or two or three or four, whatever.
Well, you 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 are well within your right as chief justice to be like, hey, okay, fuck this weird cargo manifest shit. You know, i- i- if this truck has more than eighty percent of uh, its maximum weight, then it's too unsafe to drive on the road. Boom, done.
Yeah, I think that's probably easier to enforce. But I don't know what. Like, I I would really like to know, and maybe you guys can ask Marlo, or maybe I'll ask him during the week to get me some info. Maybe if they could just record all the contracts they pick up and tell me how much weight is in each contract. And that way, because because my big concern is I I want there to be choice, right? So.
Yeah.
If you pick up four contracts and they weigh a thousand each and your trailer holds seven, you know, K. Well, clearly, like, you know, you know, if it was, you know, twenty thirty percent, you know, you you clearly would only pick up four or five instead of the seven, right? And anything above that you go over. What I don't want is the weight limit to be like in the middle of a contract weight. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Cause then it gets weird about, well, you know, is under and.
Yeah, um, I I recommend calling Marlo and asking.
Okay, I'll get some data from Marlo and I'll bring a proposal next week that resolves the issue. Cause I I think I agree with you that the the that law has never been really functional.
Yeah, uh, it technically is functional. It's just.
Right. It's just nonsensically functional. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like math functional, not logic.
Uh, in the interim, I mean, the person who this probably matters to the most, uh, Matt Rhodes, I did instruct him on the, uh, proper way to actually articulate this in the in the meanwhile.
Yeah, I'll I'll talk to Rhodes. I'll talk tomorrow. I'll get a, you know, recommendation from the user base, so to speak, and I'll bring a proposal.
Word. Uh, anything else, Mike? Hmm, no, that's it. Okay, so we decided that, uh, illegal dumping equals, uh, unsafe operation of a wide load or a commercial vehicle. Uh, my darling wife, the chief of staff.
Uh, yeah, updated the death penalty legislation. Part seventeen, whatever it is that we've been working on it for, um, based on like some feedback, Michael and I were talking about this and, uh, you know, our, we had concerns about it being in Bolingbrook prior with like doctors. But it came to my attention recently that Tanner is already operating as like a DOC doctor for them. So they're already doctors that are entering.
Uh, he's not a, he's not a doctor.
There was somebody else. I cannot remember, Amori. Who had, I wanna say.
I'm just gonna say this right now, uh, as far as I know, and Kenner can back me up on this if I'm correct. Uh, it is a hard and fast rule and will be so the doctors cannot operate outside the prison.
Yes.
Inside the prison, sorry, you mean.
No, cannot operate out. That's actually funny. That's a funny Freudian slip. Cannot be operated outside the hospital.
There we go. Okay. All right, right.
Yeah, straight from the top on that one.
Yeah. They cannot operate outside of their prison. How about that?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
So there is no way for them to call time of death anywhere else outside of the.
No, they would have to be transported, um, after the fact. Which we we need to do, you know, we need to prepare their body and things and everything. So they should be transported anyway, ideally, but.
That's what I was wondering. Okay, so that is, that that's not an issue then? If they just need to be transported after the fact either way?
No, that's totally fine. Yeah, if they have to be transported, that's okay.
So what if we allowed the things to occur within the prison and anybody, you know, who steps foot in there does so with the full understanding of what that means per our other legislation regarding the prison?
On on a fundamental level, I I still have the same objections I've I've had. If prison's supposed to be this lawless black hole, Bobby and Carmine's domain, I I don't know how we do any official legal function in there.
Well, this is gonna sound crazy. Let Bobby and Carmine do it.
They they could do it already is what I'm saying. We don't need to legislate it. Like, they they could.
I feel like we had this exact conversation last time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It feels like we've, yeah.
I'm saying if our version of the death penalty is they're never getting out of Bolingbrook, I I I think that's fine. I I think if we're gonna legislate how people die, though, that that has to occur outside the prison.
Why don't we just sell pay-per-view tickets somewhere else?
That was the initial page was, I mean, she vomit did it at the Vine Bowl, but people didn't like that, yeah.
He's talking about tickets for like a broadcast.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, the reason it was hated, uh, also you're whispering, uh, the reason it was hated at a Vinewood Bowl is because we, uh, were talking specifically about uh, letting people do two, like, like a mutual combat to the death. That's like, that is where we.
Oh, no, my, my, my commentary about the Vinewood Bolden was not the combat to the death. It's about the fact that holding, uh, a public event like that outside is impossible. Because it will inevitably be grenaded, you know.
Yeah.
AK sprayed terrorist, you know, oil tanker exploded, you know, name or pick.
Yeah.
Uh, we just need a better spot for something like this, I think. Um. Maybe like a rooftop. So I don't know. I don't know.
Cause it was a a public execution, right? That's what y'all are discussing.
Yeah, so we don't need to, we don't need to get hung up so much on the location right now. Uh, just the fact that the, uh, death penalty can be used as a capital punishment. Is that something that we are all in super agreement with and that with with the, uh, with the knowledge that we will find a suitable location for something like this in the future so that the public can come and it will also hopefully be protected from outside AK spray slash grenade throwing?
Yeah.
Uh, I can think of a couple of locations. It just might be, uh, we'll just. For example, that casino was finished construction, uh, a couple of weeks ago. A magnificent building. Uh, I know that more construction is coming. So, uh, the, who knows, maybe there will eventually be a place where, uh, it will be uh, feasible.
Okay, hell, yeah. I'm all for it. I think, uh, I think if people are being put to death, uh, they deserve a level of, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, we already have.
Fuck it.
Is 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 death penalty already established?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's already a potential punishment, yeah.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
It's not codified yet.
That's what I meant, yeah.
It's just always been done.
Cause we, cause in, well, no, what I mean is, is that we have charges that are hot charges. And we have, you know, capital punishment options because the sentencing is indeterminate. It is up to, you know, the judge, right? So technically, we haven't. It's just, it has not been exercised and thus the actual parameters have not been developed.
Okay.
So, uh, that would be a good thing to codify would be the methods by which people are executed. And or which crimes qualify, but I think that's already laid out with.
I think, yeah, I think the capital level crimes is already codified.
We've already got all that, yeah.
Language in there too about educated by a judge, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, so it's just how it's, it's how it's, uh.
Exactly.
Carried out and where.
This little document actually says that. I don't know if you guys are actually, I I see Philip in here.
Oh, yes.
This document lays that out and, uh, with my wife and, uh, Michael and I talked about last night is.
Kyle Brad, you are so fucking loud. Shut up.
He's still just as loud as always.
You motherfucker.
Is it bad that I'm actually used to that sound?
I mean, I I don't mind. I just don't want people to get distracted. So.
No, it's fair, yeah.
The the purpose of this would be to establish these three methods of death penalty and to also, and this is important. Um, give the discretionary choice of death row inmate, uh, give them the choice, uh, that they will be executed by the state.
Oh, they already got that. Was that the one we had in the past?
Well, I mean, once again, it's not codified.
Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry. What I'm, I'm asking. Okay, yeah, that's what we already had. Yeah, yeah, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, we just added the burning of the steak.
Which, hey, if someone picks it, I mean, you know, they're right.
That's how we'd wanna go.
Exactly.
Should be an option.
That's how.
Shudders in pagan.
So that that's what I was talking about with my wife last night. I was like, listen, man. This is potential, like, the implication of that's potentially really bad, but.
Discretionary choice of the death row inmate.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they choose that, that's how they want it.
Where is the steak?
Um, not in someone's front yard.
No, we're thinking like witches and all that, you know, they're the normal.
Yeah, right, but still, I mean, I'm, I'm just pointing out.
Taylor Swift.
Even if the pyre is simply a puddle of gasoline, the person stands and we ignite it. You know, I still need to, you know, we need to figure that out.
Cuff them and shackle their ankles and, yeah. There you go.
Uh, is there anything that we're not willing to entertain as far as death penalty that they would potentially pick just to get out in front of that or is that?
Well, that's why we are codifying these three specific options.
I like the, uh, what's that one? I I forget whether it was Vikings or Native Americans did it. Uh, they basically put you in a like a canoe.
Yeah.
Uh, what like tied to the to the baseboards. So you're you're face down, you're you're on your back, your back down.
Vikings.
You're looking straight up and then they put like honey and shit all over you. Oh, it was Romans. It was Roman. You put honey and shit all over you. Yeah. And then, uh, the birds come and just eat you alive.
Yeah, that sounds Roman as fuck.
Holy fuck.
Fire arrow.
No, you get tied on your back and then they put shit on you that attracts pests and animals.
Very Roman.
And then you just get eaten by the birds and.
They put a rat in a bucket on your stomach and then they light a fire on the other side. So it burrows into your stomach.
Way out, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good one.
Yep.
Love that movie.
Oh, my god.
Just chain them to a rock and let murder kitties get them.
That's, that's too fast. That's too simple.
All in favor, or rather, all in not favor. Sorry, meaning some non, guys. I had some pocket.
I mean, just read the actual language, but yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I mean, it's their choice. Let them have it.
Yeah, whatever. Sounds good to me.
Okay, um, squeaky chair, uh. Chief of Staff, do you have anything else to present?
Um, that was all that I had. I know you 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 got stuff.
Uh, sidebar.
Well, I think the last person they hired was Moose Knuckles. You, uh, like a mime sympathizer?
I come before you today. Not as a man. Not as a mayor. But a concerned citizen.
Oh, god.
Recently, some of you may have realized that a particular plague has taken to our streets. Are any of you familiar with the clown war?
Oh, god, yes. They keep fucking battling it out at the hospital.
Yeah.
It's clear that these two factions have begun allowing their their previous conflict to spill over into the streets into sacred places like the, uh, Crusade Medical Hospital, disrupting medical care for others. I've seen these motherfuckers towing helicopters. Uh, and in fact, someone left a dead mime with his entrails cut out at the top of City Hall or the top of the stairs of City Hall.
Very grim.
That's metal.
That ace, Jesus.
I think it's important that we as council members remember we possess the power to legislate. And in the past, there have been instances of the thing that I'm about to propose in order to curtail certain behaviors on the street. Some of you may recall that Alan Crane mentioned, in fact, that he had a particular arc in which he, uh, was a vampire hunter.
No.
Alan Crane, vampire slayer. Um, I was in prison for that, so I don't really recall that. Actually, maybe I wasn't. However, it's clear to see that the majority of people. Uh, I'm proposing that the Council of Eight support the majority in this conflict. It's not a brave suggestion. Indeed, some might call it a safe suggestion. However, what I propose today is not too radical, nay. In fact, I think it's the next logical step to ensure that the streets can finally know peace. I wish to legislate that every single mime that enters into Los Santos not be treated as human and not have rights.
That's not where I thought that was going.
Wow, okay.
I thought you were proposing clown hunting season.
Oh, my god.
No, no.
Quite the contrary, because there's.
Wait, what if we do alternate seasons? What if there's six months of the year where you can buy a license to hunt clowns and you can bag one clown like per week, maybe? And then the other six months of the year, you get a license to hunt mimes and you can do the same. You pay like a premium.
How about this? We we see where the clown population is at after this first phase. However, I know, I know for a fact, there's like literally just like three mimes causing all this shit.
But we had a mime almost stabbed me at Mosley's, so.
They are a bit insane, yeah.
A mime almost stabbed me at Senior Buns. They're crazy. They are.
One could argue that the sentience of a mime is in question because what makes us sentient? Our ability to communicate. And if they're communicating like animals, should they be treated as humans?
Well, there's.
Wait, hold on.
You know what? Never mind.
I'm gonna say.
Fucking hard.
Saying that people who are deaf and communicate with sign language are not human?
Oh, boy.
No, just minds.
Just moms, just, just, just.
Yeah, in this case, just minds.
Actually go through a lot of speech therapy, but to be able to articulate, uh, 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 and speak even though it's difficult for them.
I had a dream once that a parent who was a speech pathologist and I felt like I had to say that.
Nah, just minds, guys.
Just moms, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm in full agreement. Mimes are a menace.
All in favor of removing, oh, sorry, go on.
I just have a couple of questions here. Did we say that the only person who showed up dead is a mime, though?
Yeah, well, you know, who knows what that mime did to antagonize them?
I'm just gonna say I was with, uh, Captain Slacks when a mime viciously attacked officers as well. You know, they are a real menace.
Important note, there's a difference between playing charades and using an entirely different sign language to communicate. Mimes do not use sign language. They simply do shit like this. Fucking. Motherfucking. You know what I'm saying? Anyway.
Does that one mean?
Uh, it means they're happy. Okay, so, uh, fuck mimes. Uh, I personally would be cool with them not having rights. Uh, so I bring this to you, Council of Eight. Let's bring peace back to these streets, yo. Thank you.
You know, uh, it's not a new concept, honestly.
It's not. We did have.
Peace by genocide has been tried many times, many places.
Oh, my god.
Okay, not that part.
I mean, legit, there is a legitimate argument. I mean, hey, uh, you know, because it's the age of question, right? It's like. hey, uh, you know, cause it's the age old question, right? It's like, let's say you've had a country where there's two factions that have been warring back and forth and.
Oh, my god.
You know, uh, one faction, you know, has control at this time, but then another faction had another time, right?
No.
And it flips every like couple of years. Well, if you just pick a time to go in as a peacekeeping force and enforce the law of one faction, then you're you're just kinda choosing an arbitrary, you know, point in the sand of which to justify their authority, right? I mean, it's kind of the same thing here, right? So yeah, state sponsored genocide, I'm down.
I abstain. I've never done that before.
I tried to reduce the damn legislation before, so you know.
I'm scared.
Okay, any any nays or abstainers?
I I would like the the clowns to be lumped in with. I would like both of them to have no rights personally.
Oh, my god. No, 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 no.
Oh, Jesus Christ.
Um, as mayor, I am, I am uh, I am bringing this to the table in order to represent, uh, they actually represent a large uh, portion of Los Santos.
They do.
Um.
They do, yeah.
So what we what we can do, you know, if we help them get rid of their mortal enemy, right? We see where they go. If they if they end up being a larger menace than they were before, I am one hundred percent down to uh, you know, maybe even the playing field in the.
Why don't we make it a twofer? Mimes are hereby, you know, second-class citizens, whatever, right? We agree with that.
Okay.
But uh, clowns who are in debt
Oh.
and get arrested must convert all their fine into extra time.
Oh, my god.
Uh.
Let's focus on the mimes. Let's focus on the mimes. Come on.
Who? Okay, you know what? I think I'm gonna abstain as well.
Um. This act's sole purpose is to remove rights from mimes and to make them second-class citizens as written. Who is in favor? Raise your hand.
I I have one more question.
Hmm.
What is the definition of a mime?
Uh, someone who wears, okay, I, uh.
Because I could see a lot of people uh, walking up to someone and shooting them and saying, oh, uh, you know, they wave their hands in front of my face.
Yeah, that, it was my concern with the like uh, the Dan kill on sight stuff and things like what, you know, you're opening up the field to, they could just say, I thought it was a Dan. I thought it was a mime.
Here's what I wrote. A mime is someone who gesticulates and does not communicate verbally. Furthermore, they are dressed like a traditional mime.
So are we talking uh, traditional as in the black and white striped shirt?
Yeah, or just some variation of that. Like sometimes they have like a red hat, you know, like it's it's pretty obviously a mime when you look at them.
Or the gray man.
Oh, yeah, he applied to be a doctor, uh, but we had to tell him that you kind of need to be able to communicate.
That something wonders, right?
Treating them. Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty sure that that guy's a felon also.
Oh, yeah, that tracks.
Yeah.
Well, the only violent phones can be doctors.
He was a violent felon.
I feel, I feel like as a doctor, I probably shouldn't be.
Oh, my god.
Wow.
That guy's a fucking menace. I agree on that one.
Judiciary will be able to do sniff test it. You'll know it when you see it.
Yeah. Oh, uh, hey, Roman.
Yeah, I I I'll I'll defer to the rest of you. Uh, as a doctor, I just don't feel like I should be voting on this.
Okay.
I still would, I'm just uh.
You're you're a treasurer, not a doctor in this room.
Well, yes, but.
That could make a paralegal's career, okay.
Where where is where is the benefit to the economy?
I don't know.
I think.
Hmm.
You saw my bonnet license.
Wasted on the wood.
I'll tell you, I'll I'll tell you exactly how this benefits.
Mime hunting season. Mime hunting season.
Um, we could give passes. Um, also, certainly finish swallowing that meeting more non, um. Basically, every ti- every time someone is incarcerated in Bowling Brook, it costs the state money. Do you guys know that?
Yes.
And if they're dead, they don't cost the state money because they won't be in prison for doing all the crazy shit they've been doing.
Oh.
That's.
Penny saved as a penny earned.
Poor.
Hey, Max, do you know what self sabotage means?
Uh, no. Are you going to explain it to me in like a like a smarmy, like I'm an old eighty-year-old guy way right now? Is that where, is that what's going on?
No, I thought I thought the joke was self-heavening. Nevermind.
Well, yeah, cause you, cause you, you said it out loud and then said, hey, Max, do you know what this is? Because I just said something and it was like, he was like, ha, owned, got him.
Yeah, what did I say? Uh, hey, Max, do you know what the definition of self sabotage is?
That was a really good impression, Ben.
That was actually really good, yeah.
Mayor asked me to explain the joke.
Yeah, well. Any nays?
Uh, I'm gonna have to be a nay.
Why? Tell us why, Dakota.
Uh, because I'm picturing a scenario
Mm-hmm.
where someone is abducted at gunpoint and then they're taken to a clothing store.
Hmm.
And they are given very explicit instructions on what outfit to put on and what face paint to put on. And then they're taken to another location in which they are executed. And then I'm told, this was a mime.
Yo, what, bro, what if, okay, for a moment, someone kidnapped me and they were like, hey, um, I'm gonna take you to the gun store and I'm gonna put this gun on you after I shoot a guy and then I'm gonna shoot you and then I'm gonna leave you in an alleyway somewhere. And then what if the guy also had like a nuclear uh, detonation key activation? And he like, put it in my hand and then like made me push the red button that that launched the nuke that killed everyone in the fucking world and started like the worldwide nuclear war? What if, what if someone kidnapped me and then made me, um, oh, fuck.
What are we talking about?
That's human trafficking. That's just human trafficking. We're both like, you suggested it's human trafficking.
This this what-if kidnapping argument is so fucking lame, dude. I'm sorry. Why do we, why do we?
But it happens.
It does not happen! It does not happen, motherfucker!
Wait, hold on. What are we talking about?
It's something like that. The situation that you articulated in Mo is human trafficking. Right? And I would, it would only be the PD to do an investigation, wouldn't it?
I keep being told we can't trust the PD to do things like that, so no.
I mean, we can.
I do agree with you in theory, so it's.
I'm saying we can't have it both ways. We can't have faith in our public servants and then not have faith in them.
Yeah, I got you.
I would say if someone is uh, gonna dedicate their life to being a mime, that should be very noted in their public profile. Very noted.
Sure. Make them register.
Oh, my god. I can't, I'm abstaining. I'm abstaining.
And the shark has been jumped, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm abstaining, um. You guys, you guys have your, I will not say no to it.
But we actually came full circle. I made a joke about Max doing this like at the first meeting.
Yeah.
What meeting?
The first one where we were talking about old people and I said, yeah, you know, we should register all of them that are over seventy-five and make them wear like a, you know.
Let's let's be clear. I think mimes are subhuman. I think they should have to register and I think they should be allowed to be shot on the street for being mimes. There's no, there's no, oh, ooh, ooh, this is, this is weird, blah blah. That's literally what I'm saying. Any nayers?
I I'm still gonna be a nay.
Walton?
Same.
Uh, Kanter?
Uh, I abstain.
Alan Crane?
Uh. If we're if we're good at defining what a mime is and someone who is a mime knows they're a mime and there's no way to, you know, muddy the water, then yeah, I don't care. I don't like mimes.
Let's make a registry. Uh, Etta?
Abstain.
They're they're gone.
Michael? Go for it. Um. Siobhan?
You already know.
Say it for the record.
Yay.
Yay.
All right, tie it up. So the mayor's vote carries.
Yeah.
And now mimes aren't people. Hooray!
Good job.
I'll make the uh, the mime registry now. We can have uh, judges handle it or even me. Actually, I can make notes on people's profiles, so.
Wow.
Cool. I'll do that after this meeting. Um, I don't have anything else to present, so I think we're done. Question mark?
I just have a general question. So I I see in here like this sheriff selection thing. Is this just part of the police continuity plan or is this uh, is this like a fed thing? Okay.
Um, yeah, a little bit, a little bit of both, we'll say.
Alright, fair enough.
Uh, we're just gathering our thoughts on that. Um. The many cops have spoken to me and they want, the the this is how they envision an election for sheriff. Okay. And I don't necessarily disagree with them. Okay. Uh, run concurrent with actual like elections for like the city council and stuff and mayor. Uh, it has to be a former cop. Uh, the writing here says former sheriff. Uh, that's not happening. I'll say that right now.
Yeah, I think it should be a current cop. That was my only hangup on it.
Current cop, not former.
And that that's just because this was like an early draft of that particular legislation. Um, or not like the, just for record keeping sake, that's how we're gonna do it. Um. It basically, it would happen at the same time as all other elections and then, you know, it would have to be a current cop and then, you know, a- any public person could vote for that. Uh, cause that's typically how sheriffs are elected everywhere else. Uh, and I think it's a cool, I think it's a cool idea personally. Um.
I like it, honestly.
There are, there are a couple of things that need to be done before we start this process though. Mainly, uh, there's no functional police department in the county for the.
Right.
Um.
Signups start for this uh, in three days. So do you, or maybe it should not run at the same cycle as the city council.
Um, we could have them start and like start getting like their organization set up. Um, and all that stuff. So and and there's another problem too. Okay. Oh, my fucking god. You guys good? Hey, tell them to shut the fuck up.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely.
Thanks.
It's uh, not not to interrupt your train of thought, Max, but in in theory, if if you're not wanting to push this out the door right away, it could line up with the civilian oversight board elections, whenever those are, since those are already off kilter.
Um, I think, no, those happened fairly recently and this will be, i- i- it, this will be a need to be on its own cycle. Let's just put it that way because it's, it's probably not ready for the next three days. Uh, because if we and maybe Max and I can talk about this later, but basically, I'm just thinking through. I don't wanna put pressure on the construction crews being like, hey, we elected a sheriff and then the sheriff's gonna like go to Max and be like, where's my building? Uh, I think we should probably be more uh, responsible and say, okay, we will uh, get word, you know, to the construction folks that we intend to hire a sheriff, get a reasonable expected date of when the building could be ready and then center the elections around that timeframe. I think that's probably more responsible.
Yeah, so a- and alternatively, what we could do is we could say, hey, uh, you're gonna be sheriff of the county sheriff's office, whatever it's gonna be called. Um, whoever gets elected and we're gonna be like, hey, you can do this and this can happen, but you need to understand that you might be operating out of MRPD for the next foreseeable future. You know what I'm saying? And also, there there is a uh, slight chain of command issue that needs to be cleared up, you know, like who does the sheriff?
Exactly. That's another issue.
So we we gotta work out all of this shit before we uh, begin doing sheriff stuff, which it's possible we get it done in three days, but.
Highly doubtful.
Yeah, uh, I will be working on that. Uh, cause I I wanna talk to Barrick and I wanna talk to Ruby and I wanna talk uh, to the state and then we gotta figure out, you know, like who who is gonna be doing what, like, you know, like are are the sheriff's underlings going to answer to LSPD High Command? You know, like, like there are a lot of questions to be answered first.
Right.
Yeah, uh, okay, so yeah, some hybrid of what we just discussed is probably fair.
No way the cameraman can take close-ups.
We could, you know, how about we do this? How about we take what you're saying where you do all the groundwork, right? Uh, and we officially tell the PD that a sheriff is coming and thus we are trying to figure out all the parameters for the job first. Uh, and then use that as a way to buy time for the construction.
Uh, sounds good. I like that plan.
So I will uh, uh, with you, uh, try to get a timeline together and then uh, you, you know, you and uh, your team can exercise your state authority to communicate with the PD and get information.
Does the lion thing thing?
Freaking good. Sounds freaking.
Long live the chat.
Uh, Crane, we gotta, uh, my wife and I wanna talk to you.
Okay.
After this meeting, I I don't think we have anything else to present. At all. So I mean, good meeting, everyone. Fuck mimes, yo.
Alright.